During the meeting of May 29 to order, we're going to start with a clerk reading the roll.
Councilmember DuBois, Vice Mayor Philseth.
Here.
Councilmember Fine.
Here.
Councilmember Holman. Mayor Niss.
Here.
Councilmember Koo. Councilmember Scharf.
Here.
Councilmember Tanaka. Councilmember Wolbach.
Here.
Six present.
Thank you. And we are considering going into closed session regarding potential litigation conference with our city attorney. And number two, discussing public employment, the title of that is City Manager. May I have a motion to go into closed session?
So moved to second.
Okay, would you vote on the board? Oops.
There we go.
It's close to passing.
Great. Do you vote to go into closed session?
I'm abstaining.
Yes, we got five.
Okay. We have five I's and they're up on the board with Greg Scharf voting. So we will see you out here in a couple of hours. May 29 special meeting. Special meeting because we normally meet on Monday nights. And we have already called the meeting to order. We have spent time in closed session. We have nothing to report out. And we are now going to go on to agenda changes, additions, and deletions. If you have one, this is a good time to push your button. And I don't see anything.
Mayor Niss.
Yes, ma'am.
Can we have a, in your packet is to remove Agenda Item Number Seven on consent to move it to June 18, I believe it is. So we need a motion to move it.
Okay. Okay, there's been a motion and a second. Let's vote on that before we vote on the consent calendar.
Could you just repeat?
Pardon?
I'm sorry, could you just repeat which item we're moving to when?
Number seven.
To when?
To June 18.
Oh, I did not see that on here. Okay, thank you.
So, and as soon as, so that passes, and I'm going to presume, who are we missing? Lydia Koo. And that passes with everyone present except for Councilmember Koo. And that takes us to the entire consent. Whoops, I missed the minutes approval. Excuse me. Let me go back one step.
See you.
Gosh, I'm skipping everything tonight. Let's go way back.
It's okay. I'll give you a breather if that's helpful.
So, thank you for being here tonight. And I know that Jim is indisposed, so I really appreciate your sitting in.
You bet. I'd be happy to provide a brief report on behalf of the City Manager. Again, Ed Chikata, Assistant City Manager. Jim's feeling under the weather today, so happy to sit in for him. Few items of note I'd like to share with the council. First, from the Utilities Department, being named TreeLine USA for the first, or fourth year in a row. City Palo Alto Utilities Department's been recognized with this TreeLine USA Award by the National Arbor Day Foundation. TreeLine USA recognizes the utility for demonstrating how trees and utilities can coexist for community and citizen benefits by exceeding five core standards, including quality tree care, annual worker training, tree planting, and public education programs, a tree-based energy conservation program, and Arbor Day celebration events. TreeLine USA is a partnership between the Arbor Day Foundation and the National Association of State Foresters. And the award recognizes public and private utilities for pursuing practices that protect and enhance America's urban trees. Next, you have a photo to share, David? Ah, so we do. Okay, so this falls under the heading, "We're There When You Need Us." Also, there's no place like Palo Alto. Submitted by the Fire Department, "Add Bike Repair to the List of Services Provided by the Fire Department as Needed." Fire Department's mission describes their dedication to safeguarding and enriching the lives of anyone, anytime, anywhere. Recently, this young lady was riding her bike home when her bike became unridable due to a bent fender. So she pulled into Fire Station Number Two on Hanover, where firefighter Jesus Zuniga helped her remove and repair the fender. Her father took this picture and shared it with the city. Update on the Last Straw. Submitted to our Public Works Department, as you may recall, on April 16, the last straw, last straw. I need to get my pronunciation correct on this one. Council presentation by Palo Alto Junior Girl Scout Troop 60,016 was received. The Scouts declared May as Drinking Straw Awareness Month and signed up over 40 restaurants to display educational posters, table tents, and only, that would only provide straws on request. Our Mayor Niss congratulated the troop last week as they received their Bronze Award for this effort. The more the public understands the environmental problems with single-use plastic items such as straws, the sooner we'll be able to control plastic litter and pollution. And finally, looking ahead for the annual Buoyancy Music Festival. The city is partnering with the Teen Arts Council and the Art Center Teen Leadership Committee to present its annual Buoyancy Music and Art Festival at Mitchell Park on Sunday, June 3, at 4:30 PM as part of the city's Free Twilight Concert Series. The Buoyancy Festival features live teen bands, art and wellness tents, carnival attractions, free hot dogs and ice cream, and more. This event is open to teens age 13 through high school. For more information about the lineup for the Twilight Concert Series, please visit the Special Events page on the City of Palo Alto's website. That concludes my report.
Free Line Award be presented here or somewhere else?
I would be happy to check on that. And if it'd be council's interest, be happy to try and arrange that.
Well, congratulations for the fourth year, right?
Yes, that's correct.
Impressive. Okay, thank you. City Manager comments, and Ed Chikata is sitting in again for Jim, who is not able to be here tonight. So this takes us to Oral Communications, and we have six cards, starting with Bruce McHenry, then Ken Horowitz, Fred Baylen, See Ready, Brian Strope, and Stephanie Munoz. So, welcome.
Good evening. Thank you. I'm here to address the council about an issue that's of importance to anybody who drives or uses public transit. And I'm scouting for...
Let's just reset your time, okay?
Okay.
Hang on. Yes, go ahead.
It's three minutes, is it? Is it three minutes?
Two minutes.
Two minutes. I'm scouting for politicians who are very ambitious and who want to lead an effort not just in Palo Alto, not just in Santa Clara, not just in California, not just in the United States, but a global effort to take the road and rail systems on a 50-year plan, which will solve really all the congestion problems by the end of that time, and actually much sooner than that. The first stage is, of course, to start using all the empty seats they're driving around all the time, every day. And part of that program is to incent drivers by having them pay tolls on all of the lanes where there are two or more, all the streets where there are two or more lanes. That means the El Caminos, that means a good section of University Avenue, that means, well, maybe not University Avenue, but the El Caminos, the Page Mills, the et cetera, et cetera. Two or more lanes. And this will be accomplished by means of not what they're planning to do up here on the San Mateo County and making a big mistake using traditional tolling techniques with lanes where there are entry points and exit points, but by using smartphones to do the tolling, to do the ride sharing, to do the onboard signaling to let you know what speed to proceed in order to have continuous greens, and to provide warnings when people are not in compliance, to bring the accident rates way, way down. So anyway, all this technology is actually pretty straightforward to do, is definitely can be put in the pipeline. And if we can put it in the pipeline, that can be accelerated greatly by having a leader or leaders, starting maybe here in the City Council, to propose to do the right thing and bring the citizens along in a program to end congestion.
And if you have something in writing that you want to leave with the clerk to circulate to us, you're welcome to do that. Welcome, Dr. Horowitz.
Yeah, thank you. Good evening. Just want to give you an update. I'm looking forward to the report that's going to come out on Thursday regarding the polling for the sugar beverage tax. I know you get a lot of emails and letters, but I wanted to leave with the clerk tonight. Some information, one is from Healthy Food America, which is a roadmap for successful sugar drink tax campaigns. I even sent this to the city attorney. I'm also going to leave with you the various cities that have approved the tax and the revenues collected. And I think this is really important. And Boulder, Colorado, just passed this tax, and they went for two cents per ounce. And I'm thinking that when the council discusses this next week, that maybe two cents is a better thing to think about because it will generate a lot of revenue for the city. And I think, given the discussions that you guys have had about finance. Couple other things. The Campagneal, the Palo Alto paper, school newspaper for Palo Alto High School, did a little story about the city council. And if you go ahead and approve this, I'm going to work real hard, and I'm going to get a lot of volunteers out in the field, including my students at Foothill College and also our high school students who are interested. And then finally, another thing I'll leave with the clerk is a letter from the Palo Alto PTA Council that is supporting this particular tax. So these are just documents that I have. I look forward to being here on Monday night with a team of people who want to support this tax.
I believe we did poll for two cents.
Did you poll? Oh, that's great. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Fred Baylen?
Mayor Niss, your fellow council members, on Monday, a proposed ordinance for a workforce housing combining district will come before you. At its Planning Commission hearing on January 31, and as I wrote to you shortly after, one commissioner would not accept the procedures for discussion set down by staff and the chair, continually interrupted and was disrespectful of both staff and the chair, and repeatedly challenged without basis the legitimacy of another commissioner to participate. This is a partial list of detrimental distractions, and in aggregate, possibly a factor in the commission's failure to inquire why an environmental study for the workforce housing district was not presented for review, contrary to the wording in the proposed ordinance. The behavior at this specific meeting is just part of a broader and repeating package, which also includes outright misstatements, occasionally corrected by other commissioners, a tax designed to diminish and misrepresent the motivations of those in disagreement, and the creation of false generalizations to further divide residents who have valid, reasonable, yet differing perspectives. Over the last two council meetings, you have grappled with issues of inappropriate conduct. Part of the optimal path forward is how behavior is modeled at the dais. And part of the trust in a council appointment is utmost respect and fair consideration by those who take on this responsibility. When that baseline is repeatedly violated by an appointee, you do not let it sit until the balance of your term or the commissioners', which extends past all of yours. Finally, related to but separate from the aforementioned are the ethical on FPPC issues in my formal complaint of March 5, which I'm updating with new information since its submission. Thank you.
Thank you. See Ready?
Good evening, Mayor, and Vice Mayor, and City Council, and all the citizens of Palo Alto and the neighboring cities. I am delighted to see the Secretary of State send me my eligibility to be a write-in candidate. There are three others for the US Senate race. I have a high bar. I wanted to express my views, and thank you. And thanks for the 65 people that double-signed, where I got it for 65 people for my nomination, but also changed my mind and did a write-in, so I didn't have to pay $3,700 plus $1,500 for a statement. So I want to tell you, you know, the next week is the election. I know what's coming, so I anticipate losing. I want to wish Diane Feinstein next term. I do want to let you know that I will be leaving Palo Alto. I'm going to Europe and India for next venture. And I have the greatest admiration for the city and the people that lived here, work here, and contribute to the society. And I cannot not forget my admiration for Vice Mayor Greg Schmidt, and the toughness of Pat Bird. I think they both deserve, Alma Drive to be named after them, maybe Share Halfway here and Halfway there, as well as many others that deserve. And many people that I met, I have a lot of friends from Starbucks, my friends in the back. I met two Nobel laureates, Amrit Yashen at Tamarin, as well as Malaya Yousafi at one of the Indian restaurants, and many more. And I thank you for the opportunity you've given me to listen, and I'll be missing the three minutes, but you'll have more time for other people to contribute. Thank you all, and I appreciate your kindness.
Okay, thank you. And Brian Strope, do I say it right?
That's it. Thank you. Thanks for the opportunity to speak. I was lucky enough to buy a house in Palo Alto in 1998, and I've never had a reason to come to this meeting. Thank you for taking care of the city. I've ridden a bike to work since my first summer job when I was 14. For the last 20 years, I've been lucky enough to ride a bike here to work. And for the last 10 years, my son also commutes by bike. It's clear there are a lot of thought, effort, and money went into our Ross Road project, despite our best intentions to make the city more inviting to biking. Sadly, that project is a failure. It does the opposite. People on Ross feel less safe on bikes and in cars, and many of us do not, or do our best to avoid it. Eight-year-old kids on 30-pound bikes going 10 miles an hour are being told in PE class to merge into traffic with 70-year-old drivers of 4,000-pound cars going 30 miles an hour. Think about the physics. If you're crossing Ross Road at Meadow on your way to JLS, you also need to get through a new roundabout with a center that feels about as big as a merry-go-round. To make it more complicated, new curb extensions at that roundabout obstruct the existing, or the pre-existing bike lanes. Obstructing a bike lane with an object is dangerous to bikes, obviously, and it's a violation of California code. Those of us who ride it regularly know that sensible kids avoid the bike pinch points and head for the sidewalks. Sadly, that's dangerous, too. It's another sign something is very wrong. National Highway Safety Standards recommend roundabouts be larger than 90 feet. When they're smaller, they're too dangerous. British studies of roundabouts show that they reduce head-on car accidents, but they increase the rate of accidents with bikes and pedestrians. Two years ago, my son was hit on his bike at the small roundabout at Bryant and Addison just over here. It's another unusual and creative design. The driver was over 70 and told my son, "I waited two seconds after I stopped." My son had no stop. The roundabout is too small, and a distracted driver didn't react quickly enough. Efforts to fix Ross Road with outreach and education are more evidence of the project's failure. If you have to teach people offline to do something differently while driving, it's not working. The changes at Ross Road, like our pro-gun culture, are statistically harming our children. Please fix Ross Road now. Please remove the extra curbs that pinch pre-existing bike lanes and push bikes into main traffic. Please stop a dangerous experiment.
Thank you. Stephanie Munoz, and then Ken Joy.
Good evening, Mayor Niss and council members. The, I'd like to call your attention to a notice in the Palo Alto Weekly that Stanford ghost houses are going to get new life. That's not, that's not exactly true. They're going to get death. They're going to get demolished. And just a couple of weeks ago, Roberta Augusts pointed out to you that there were nice little houses in Palo Alto that were going to be demolished. And these were by private owners, just a few of them, and each of them was making quite a profit because you were going to give them permission to build something bigger. Well, the situation with Stanford is even worse. Stanford, and I like Stanford, but Stanford, for the last 50 years, has had an imbalance of jobs to housing. And it really seems unfair that they should take seven houses and tear down low-income houses that could be, that could house their low-income workers, only to put up big houses when they've got hundreds, literally hundreds of acres, on which they could build those nice, big, beautiful faculty houses. I really, you know, that's why you have demolition permits. That's why you have permits to construct things that are bigger, so that the council, in its wisdom, can judiciously decide which are good things to replace and which should be left alone. I really believe that you should have a talk with Stanford. I've, I've asked you before. Please, please see that Stanford has housing for their low-income workers. Please, don't let them tear down that apartment building. Thank you.
Thank you. And did our last speaker go?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, now, that is the end of oral communications. And going to the next page, it is minutes approval. I may have a motion.
So moved.
There's a motion and a second. If there's no discussion, would you vote on the board? And now taking us to the consent calendar, which is now missing number seven, which has been moved to June 18. Is there any discussion of any of the rest of the items? Okay, I see lights from Councilmember Holman and Councilmember Tanaka.
I'd like to register a no vote on item number four.
So that's a no vote from Councilmember Holman on item number four. Greg Tanaka?
No on six.
Pardon me?
No on six.
Okay, so if there's nothing else? A motion?
So moved.
Good. Okay, there's a motion and a second. Would you vote on the board? And that passes unanimously with Councilmember Koo missing. And Councilmember Koo has said that she would arrive tonight around 8:30 or 9 o'clock. So this takes us to one of two action items. And we are going to do the first action item, which deals with TDRs, which is Transfer Development Rights. And this is also going to deal with the approval of committing an additional $2 million for enhancements to the new junior museum and zoo. The second item that's going to be heard tonight is item number 10, which is Connecting Palo Alto Rail Program Status Update and Initial Screening of Ideas for Further Study. This has been continued from May 14. And council members Philseth, DuBois, and, and I have to be excused from that on advice of our attorney. So when we do get to that, Councilmember Scharf will be conducting the meeting. So, back to the current item, which deals with TDRs and with the $2 million for the zoo, is, are you going to do this one, Rob?
I am. Thank you, Mayor Niss.
Okay, so a presentation from staff, and you do have this in front of you.
That's right.
Which is item number nine, and it's a slide presentation from...
So we have a brief presentation. Mayor Niss, pleased to be here. Rob DeGosse from the City Manager's Office. I'm joined here with Lalo Perez, the Chief Financial Officer, and Hamid Gamagami, Real Estate Manager in Administrative Services. This evening, we're asking council to approve five specific actions. Four are related to the sale of transfer development rights, and one is related to the junior museum and zoo and some additional support for that particular project. If we could go to the next slide. By way of background, and we want to start with background because it's especially important for this item. And what follows after the background in the presentation is a little more of the mechanics of how TDRs are sold and the projections of likely revenues that will come from, from that. But what I wanted to share with the council was to go back to October 19, 2015. At that time, the city agreed to contribute, or the council agreed to contribute $5 million for 450 Bryant Street, which is a building that the city owns, and Avenidas is housed there to provide senior services, and they have a long-term 50-year lease. They have been hard at work raising money to renovate that facility. They've raised over $13 million. And at that time, they asked the city for $5 million to support their project, which had an $18 million budget. Staff recommended that we fund that $5 million at that time. We also recommended that 2.5 of that funding come from community center impact fees, and then 2.5 come from the transfer of development rights, which are available to be sold for the historic building at 450 Bryant Street. Council approved the $5 million commitment. Council approved the $5 million commitment and the $2.5 million commitment from development, community center development impact fee funds, but at that time did not approve the sale of Transfer Development Rights. Now, since that time, from 2015, the city has made additional commitments. Most recently, December 4th in 2017, the city committed funding support for the Junior Museum and Zoo. And since December of 2017, which I'll talk about a little bit more later as well, the primary donor of the Junior Museum and Zoo has requested that two additional elements be included in the project. While the Junior Museum and Zoo project is being funded largely by private dollars, $25 million plus, the city is also needing to contribute to that project. In addition to that, we also have an infrastructure plan that is out of balance. We've seen a dramatic increase of costs for construction, and this leaves a large unfunded gap for council's infrastructure plan. So consequently, as we conclude sort of the background, we are here this evening to ask council to reconsider the sale of TDRs in order to support the commitment to the 450 Bryant Street building, the historic building that Avenidas is in. And that allows us to free up community center impact fee funds to be able to support our commitments to the Junior Museum and Zoo. So with that, I'd like to just pass it on to Hamid to talk specifically about the four actions related to TDRs.
On the TDR side, we are asking you to basically approve the resolution to declare the 450 Bryant Street to be eligible to be a center site. So that's really the first step in the TDR process. We are also asking you to direct the city manager to issue an RFP to sell 9,188 square feet of TDR at the minimum price of $275. We are also asking you to allow the city manager, to direct the city manager, to do an RFP to market 2,500 square feet of TDR from the College Terrace Building, again, to sell at the minimum price of $275. And then finally, we are authorizing the city manager to transfer 2.5 million of proceeds from the sale of the TDR to Avenidas to be used for the cost of historic and seismic rehabilitation. And that basically will complete the $5 million commitment that we have made to Avenidas.
And then the fifth action item that we're asking council to approve this evening is to approve the comments described in the attached letter from the city manager to Mr. Dick Perry, Attachment B, in support of the Junior Museum and Zoo project stating that the city supports the contribution of $2 million of additional enhancement features, namely the netting of the zoo and the building of the treehouse. And again, I'll talk a little bit more about that because we've been in discussions with the major donor and the Friends of the Junior Museum and Zoo to work together, to come up with that $2 million.
Davenida's building is eligible for TDR based on our MUNI code. The building is a Category 2 building, as well as a listed historical Category 2. Therefore, it's eligible for 50% of the square footage of it, which comes to 9,188 square The College Terrace, already, you declared it as a center site in April of 2013, 2009, and that action generated 2,500 square feet. Little table to kind of indicate the history of TDR sales. These are the ones that are generated from city-owned buildings. If you notice, the highest price we ever sold the TDRs, these were from the Sea Scout Building. We sold the 1,800 square feet, and those sold for $405, which was, I think it was a record sale. The Roth TDR sold for about $325. Projection, basically, the higher we can sell the TDRs, the more funding will be generated, of course. So at the minimum price, we are looking at about $3,124,200. And if we can sell them for $350 per square foot, we may get about $4 million.
Good evening, Lalo Perez, Chief Financial Officer. Let me, we're throwing a lot of numbers at you, so let me see if I can put it together and help walk you along through it. So as you heard, from the $5 million original approval, we paid $2.5 million already from the community center impact fee. So that leaves a balance that you see on the top row there of $3.4 million. Assuming we're successful and sell the TDRs, if you were to approve that at a $275 per square foot price, then we would generate about $3.12 million. So putting all of that together, would give us about $6.7 million that you see of available funding. We would then proceed to make the second $2.5 million payment. We would finish the 7.2 commitment by using 3.3 from an existing CIP and the now $3.9 million from this new source of revenue. And that would leave us a balance of about $275,000. As we're asking you today for a $2 million commitment, of which the Friends are committing to try to raise $1 million, that would leave us at a deficit of about 1.7. So that would be the funding gap that we would need to make up. If we were to assume the $1 million from the Friends, then it's $724,000. If additional community impact fees come in between now and then, which we would expect to come in, then it would lower that amount of money. Assuming no other funding sources are available, most likely then the recommendation would be that the infrastructure reserve would be used to make up any difference, or you could choose the operating general fund. You would have options at that point, unless there's other fundings, such as grants, that we don't know of at this point.
So with regards to the Junior Museum and Zoo, you know, we do think that the Friends have been tremendous partners in this project from the beginning. They've raised $10 million against Mr. Perry's $15 million contribution. And with their focus on the netting of the zoo, which is an exciting element of the zoo, we think they are good for funding that. But just a little more about the Junior Museum and Zoo. The rebuilding of this treasured site would really not be possible without the generous support of many donors. And one in particular, Mr. Dick Perry. As we mentioned, he's contributing $15 million to the project. But throughout the design process, and we've discussed this with council and the Friends and the whole design team, we've had to continually work hard to stay within the $25 million budget. And as part of that, due to escalating costs and the need for redesign and value engineering, we couldn't keep everything in there that we wanted to keep in the project. Ultimately, we felt like we were there. We had met almost all of our hopes and interests in the project. But two critical elements that our primary donor really wanted to see included were no longer included. And of course, he wanted us to see even more than that, but after much discussion, you know, the netting and the treehouse elements were, too, that he would just, him and his family felt very strongly about. So at the request of the donor, and after many discussions with the donor, staff, the mayor, the city attorney, city manager, among others, we asked that we do pledge to include the netting and the treehouse in the full project as perspects and design. The estimated cost is $2 million, as Lalo had mentioned. The Friends, and we thank them very much, and a number of them are represented here, including the President, Alita Coleman, have pledged to raise $1 million of that $2 million. And then the city would look to fund the remaining balance by 2020. So we do have, you know, two, two and a half years to come up with the funding before the new museum opens up. So that's just a little bit of background about why that has come before you this evening. And pass it back to Hamid.
If we get your approval tonight, then basically here's our next steps. We will do an RFP in June, and then by July, we will close it. We'll come back to you in September and present the results, and hopefully we have sold it at a higher prices. And then in October, after we approve the sales, we close out the sales and receive the funds and close it up. Thank you.
Thanks very much. We are going to have a round of questions and comments before we get to a motion. But I do want to tell you, I'm going to separate the motion because it is really two motions as I see it. It's the TDRs. And the second one has to do with a commitment to the new Junior Museum and Zoo. So, Councilmember Holman, you have your light on.
I do, excuse me, I do. Pardon the voice. I'm trying to get some clarification. I never could get it in reading through the staff report, and I don't still have it from the presentation this evening. So there was an initial $3.9 million commitment to the Junior Museum and Zoo. And then I think in February, there was another commitment. And it's not clear to me whether this additional million dollars is on top of both of those because it's not really tallied here.
Thank you, Councilmember Holman. It is on top of the commitment we've already made for this project. And just to remind the council, it's really $7.2 million that we have committed to the project, and it's largely the ancillary project work. It's not so much for the building itself, but it is improving, the much-needed improvements needed for the parking lot, which is expensive, and the pathways and entrance ways to rink and out of park, and those types of things. But it's 7.2 that the council has already approved. This is in addition to.
So, sorry. It is what it is. Community center development impact fee money. So is there a clear description of what those funds can be used for? And the reason I ask is because it's kind of a community-based question. Because the Junior Museum and Zoo is going to be collecting an entry fee, does that still make it eligible for community center? You get the point?
I do get the point, Councilmember Holman. I'm sorry to hear about your voice there, but totally understand what you're asking.
It comes and goes.
Yeah. And we've been working closely with the Attorney's Office about what's permissible for the use of those funds. And there are pretty strict rules and regulations about how to use those funds. You can't just use them for anything. And so we've been working closely with Molly and her staff, and it's permissible to use the funds on the Junior Museum and Zoo.
That's correct. Addition of a gate charge will not make it inappropriate to use the funds.
I have another question probably for Lalo, maybe? Is, why is it the base price with the starting price at $275 as opposed to, say, $300? Because there are machinations that go on, and, you know, does that mean we would accept a price of $275, or is that just where we're starting?
Well, the average price appears that we have sold appears to be somewhere about $325. We thought at $275, they're attractive, and it's not something that maybe turned off some of the investors and people that might be interested in purchasing that. That's the minimum price. So just to give a little bit of history, for Roth Building, we came in at 200, and we were able to get $300 per square foot. So $275 in a number that I thought would work for us.
Councilmember Holman, as you are aware, you know, that's our recommendation. If the council wants to have a different number, we're definitely able to follow whatever direction you have.
Yeah, I just look at the more recent, the more recent sales have been higher. And so I just want to make sure we're not setting a bar at $275 as a minimum bid, but if somebody comes in at $275, we're required to take it. I don't think that's enough. And so I...
You're not required to take it. We, you know, we'll come back to you. Basically, you can approve it or not approve it. Molly?
That's correct. The city's, there's another step here. So the bids will not be accepted below $275. But when the bids are received, then those will be brought to council, and you have the discretion to choose the highest, to choose another if it's in the city's best interest, or decline to take any and cancel the RFP.
I understand that, but I just, I have some concerns about setting the bar at $275 and then, so those are my... Oh, there's another question I have, too, which is, I can anticipate the answer to this, but I was, I was a little concerned not seeing it in the staff report, is that the additional TDR funds going to Avenidas. They should be for, specifically for seismic and historic rehab, because that's the purpose of the TDRs. But that's not explicitly stated in the staff report, as I read it at least. There's not a, there's no, there's no comment, there's no anything. It says that the project was, you know, approved for historic rehabilitation and for the seismic rehab, but there's nothing in here that, again, that I read that says that's explicitly what this TDR... And remember with the Sea Scout Building, they didn't get all the TDR monies because they couldn't say, yes, we need that extra money because we need it for the rehab. So we didn't give them that, all of that money. So...
You're correct. We could have done a better job. I think we got caught up in this. It was a continuation of a couple of years ago where we had stated it. So for, to be on the record, yes, that's the intention.
I think those are my questions for the moment. Thanks.
Karen, do you want to suggest a higher price?
Yes, I want to suggest a minimum bid of $300 a foot. And that would bring in another $292,000. So I think the minimum bid should be $300. And I'm open to other council members suggesting more, but I think $300 is the absolute floor that we should even entertain.
So when we get to a motion, would you bring that up?
Sure, thank you.
We can weave that in? Thanks. Councilmember Scharf?
Yes.
That's you?
Calling me?
Yes.
All right. Well, first of all, I'd like to say, I'm really pleased this is coming to us. These are two of our cherished institutions in Palo Alto. And it's really nice to see both these projects moving forward. I mean, I think they're a great boon to the community. I think that people will really benefit and notice the benefits. And I actually also really wanted to thank Dick Perry for the generous donation. You know, it's community members like you, Mr. Perry, who really make Palo Alto a fantastic place. And I just wanted to say, I personally, and I think I speak for the entire council, in saying that we really, really appreciate the gift. And, you know, thank you very much. I also wanted to say that I think staff did a good job in putting this together. And I know that, you know, it's tough as you go through the process, being cost-conscious and weighing that against other things. And I know it's been a long road and a long process. And I also wanted to specifically call out the Friends again for all their hard work, and frankly, Avenidas as well. I mean, both groups, and it's interesting that it was coming together simultaneously because if we only got one of those done with a group, it really would have been a huge accomplishment. But to get both done is a testament to really what the Palo Alto spirit is like, and I think it's something we can be very, very proud of. Thank you.
Okay, I don't see any more, and I'm going to go to the public in just a minute, but let me also... Oh, sorry, Tom. Didn't see your light.
I just turned on.
Okay, well, I guess that's why.
I expected other people to be in the line. I had a quick question. There was, there was a mention about 660,000 left in the Sea Scout Fund. Is that money being used, or is it just being held?
During your review and approval of the Roth Building and the Palo Alto History Museum, the council used those funds as a potential funding source if they were to meet their targets that you set out forth for them. So I think what we're just saying is if, for some reason, they were not to be able to make that target, then from staff perspective, those funds are now available once again for some purpose related to historical restoration.
Okay, but they're still being held and reserved?
At this point, we do not consider them available for this project because they're committed to the Roth Building project. But that project has a deadline of November of 2018 to return with the Palo Alto History Museum demonstrating that they've met the match that you asked them to commit to.
Okay. Yes, I guess I'd like to echo Councilor Holman's kind of questions about how we price the TDRs. Again, we're looking at prices from two or three years ago, and, you know, I don't think real estate's gone down. I'd love to buy a house that are priced from three years ago. So I understand it's an auction, and we don't want to overprice, but I kind of echo the concerns. Maybe we should, we should... Maybe we should, we should start at a slightly higher price. And then, I just have to say again, this is kind of the second week in a row, we're getting an infrastructure project kind of one at a time with an increase. It would be really nice to kind of look at all of these projects and, and decide how we're going to allocate funds, because each project is coming one at a time and overbudgeted. And so, I'm curious, when we looked at our community impact fees, did we consider using that money for any other project?
Thank you, Councilmember DeBois. There's a long list of interests, so there definitely is consideration of other, other areas that we'd like to invest in. But the Junior Museum and Zoo project has been something we've been working on for many, many years, and we think that's probably the highest priority for where we are right now. We do have Cubberly ahead of us, and certainly that's going to need a lot of funding, and there are other projects, as you might imagine, that could-
Yeah. I mean, was there a process used to prioritize, or is it just that this is a project that's ready for funding?
Well, part of it is, jump in and see if I can help, is restricted by the rules of how you can spend the money. So, you can't just use those funds for any community facility.
Yeah. Well, I was speaking, particularly of Cubberly Community Center, using our community impact fees.
Correct. And I think, you know, that that would make sense for our eight acres. You know, I don't know if we would want to spend money on the 27 acres we're leasing. It would depend on the term of the new lease that we might get. So, if you expand a facility, then you can use it. So, it narrows the list of facilities eligible for it.
Yeah. Was the animal shelter potential?
There's some element of that that could be considered, and we did look at that, but it's not for the whole facility.
Okay.
If I could add, Councilmember, just on behalf of staff overall, I think it is reflective, the recommendation before you is reflective of really staff trying to pull this together, recognizing that the project itself has undergone a really extensive development process. And again, staff in looking at how to best meet the interests of all the parties in order to complete this project. Take notice of your, your comment with regard to really wanting to put all the infrastructure projects together in appropriate contexts, and certainly the council's prerogative. You know, at the same time, we do want to bring forward these projects as, as they come together, as they're ultimately ripe and ready for council action.
Yeah. I mean, I love the Junior Museum. It's a great project. We're into it for 7.2 million. What, what is there being done to prevent kind of any more cost overruns? I mean, do we have any assurance that this is going to be it, or?
Yeah, we do, and the council has approved the extensive contract with Friends, and we have an excellent contractor in Vance Brown building the project. We're also leveraging the opportunity to lease them the site so they can actually manage the project. We have a 10% contingency fund for the project as well, which is almost $2 million, which may also be able to support some of these extra elements that we're trying to put in place. So, we have all of the mechanisms and tools at our disposal in play here to provide that kind of assurance.
And it's been a little while. I mean, the, this additional $2 million, of which I guess the Friends are going to raise a million of that, is there any potential that we could treat that as a loan that would be repaid from entry fees to the museum? Or are those entry fees accounted for, for a particular period of time?
That's a good question, Councilmember DeBois. The, the entry fees, the way we have established the pro forma for the future of the Junior Museum and Zoo is really to fund the, the operations of the Junior Museum and Zoo. And even then, there's still going to be an ongoing subsidy of sorts from the general fund to support the zoo. I'm not sure that there'll be that additional revenue there that would be able to pay back a loan.
Okay. Yeah. Thank you.
Okay. We're going to go to the public shortly, but I did want to call out that, that tonight will be our opportunity to, perhaps thinking, think of the zoo, put a shovel in the ground. Am I right?
You are right, Mayor Nissler. The Friends are very eager to start, and not just the Friends, the whole design team, including the staff, and I think the council, to start construction as early as possible in June, by the end of June. We're hoping to do a groundbreaking. And, and I think Mr. Perry would like to see that, as well as the many other donors that have supported this project. So, it's quite exciting. Yep.
So, there's a letter in your packet, of course, you know, from, from our city manager to Mr. Perry, and acknowledges this very generous gift, and also indicates that we, we do look forward to this groundbreaking, and know that this is going to make a huge difference in our, in our community. I don't have a card from any of the Friends. Are some of the Friends here? I thought so. So, if you would like to say something, one of you, that would be very helpful. And is it going to be you?
No, Bill. We can't answer questions.
Nope. Okay. If you have questions, though, you need to come to the mic when we, when we go to the public. So, so with that, I have two people who want to speak on this, Mary Sylvester and Stephanie Munoz. And anybody else come forward and fill out a card, or come closer to the front.
I'm sorry, Mayor Nissler. I'm here on trains. I'm having to go to the bathroom.
Okay. You want to be in a different number, Mary?
Yes, I'm on trains.
On 10?
Trains, thank you. Sorry.
Yeah, that's number 10. That's the next one. Stephanie, are you here? Where did Stephanie go? So, while we're waiting for Stephanie, again, I invite any of the Friends to come forward and say something. Quiet group.
We really hadn't planned to say anything. I'm Alitha Coleman, the president of the Friends Board, and we just want to say that every person involved in all of these negotiations just wants the best and, and the most wonderful Junior Museum and Zoo that we can build for the children of Palo Alto. And we're all working toward that, and we're all happy to be doing this.
We appreciate Mr. Perry's donation. We appreciate all the hard work that you have done with your group to raise, to raise the funds for the, from the Friends. The funds from the Friends make, make all the difference. So, thank you so much. It's, it's a pleasure, and this is a vote we, I think, will enjoy taking tonight. Pardon me? Yeah, we, we will split it, but I'm going to have the maker of the motion do that. So, I'm going to call on Councilwoman Scharf.
So, again, I just want to emphasize my thanks to everyone involved in these great projects. And with that, I will move the entire staff recommendation, and the mayor can split it.
Second.
Okay. There's a motion in a second, but I am going to suggest that we split this because I'm not sure that we are all in agreement on this particular one. So, let's take up the initial part of this first, which deals with Avenidas and the TDRs. And, oh, go right ahead, Stephanie. I, I'm glad somebody went to get you, and then I'll explain what else we're doing with this.
Whatever.
Go right ahead.
Oh, thank you very much. I'm really sorry to, the piano tuner called at that moment. You know, it, I'm really quite surprised. I recall when the rehabilitation or the remodeling of Avenidas was being discussed, it was not unanimously popular. There were many people who felt that the architectural ideas that were being promulgated were not suitable, and they were disrespectful to the, the tradition and to the, to the town beauty. But I thought, well, you know, they're doing their thing, and it's their. Nobody told us that the city of Palo Alto was thinking of subsidizing this redecoration. Frankly, it seems to me the city of Palo Alto is doing an awful lot of decorating. This will be the second time that you've decorated this city hall, which has looked okay to me to begin with. And then, there was Stevenson House that nobody is mentioning, and the people came and said, we do not need redecoration. We think you should spend the money on constructing more for the homeless, but they were ignored. And now, all of a sudden, Avenidas is standing in line with its hand out to get further subsidy, and for something that was not really, at least to my mind, respectfully, and, and to that of lots of other people, is not really necessary. So, I, I think that, that you should rethink that, that especially those development assets, I believe, should go toward low-income housing, that you only get them once. They won't go, they, they won't stay for you, and they, you lose your, the, the value of them year by year. Thank you.
Thank you. So, now to come back to my explanation of, of the motion. So, the first part of the motion is contained in numbers one through four, and that involves the TDRs and the explanation that we have had earlier from staff. And the second is approving the commitments that are in the letter from the city manager to Dick Perry in support of the Junior Museum and Zoo. So, let's take them in that direction. If you want to speak to the first part of the motion, which is the TDRs, let's take that one up first and vote on it separately.
So, I should speak to my motion, then?
You should, because now your motion is slightly different than the one you made.
So, I'll come back and speak a second.
And who was your secondor?
Cory.
Is that okay with you, Cory?
Yes, so let's speak to each part.
Yes. Right. Right. But let's speak to the, to the TDRs first and vote, and then we'll speak to the zoo contribution and vote. So, yes, please, continue.
Continue. Well, I, I think it's a good way to fund these things. So, I'm glad we're going ahead and using the TDRs for the Avenidas, the way they were intended to. I think that's, that's excellent. And I wanted to talk a little bit about the price of the TDRs. So, I think it's important, if you look on page seven of the handout that we received, where you can see that in 2006, the minimum asking price was $85, and we got $95. We then, in 2010, the minimum asking price was $90, and we had not a single person bid in 2010. Now-
We were in a recession.
I was going to say that. So, we were in a recession, and no one bid. Then you saw the market really change, and we had, and we had a minimum price of $200, at which time we got a $300 bid. When we did the Sea Scout Building sale in 2016, if you'll notice, we actually had a minimum asking price of $225, and they basically happened around the same time, and one was at $405, and one was at $300. And the difference was, the person that bid $400 really needed that to complete their approvals with the, they had the plans drawn, including the extra square footage, and they really needed that, which drove them to make sure they got it rather than someone else. So, that's probably an outlier, the $405 at, at that point. The $300 is probably the right market number roughly in 2016, given a small, a small number of bidders who are interested at that point in doing it. The people that actually have a project and are thinking about it are obviously going to be willing to pay more than someone who's speculating on holding it for, for a while. So, I think the minimum asking price seems to have very little relationship, frankly, to what the market actually dictates at that moment. So, it is incorrect to say that if we take $275, or $300, or $350, that we will make more money on it. The question really becomes, if you go from $275 to $300, is you are saying, we are not going to sell it this time, and we are going to hold it off, and we are going to fund these projects from a different mechanism. That would be the correct choice of the way this actually works. So, I think, and I think that's a fine policy choice, if that's what we want to do, if we want to say, we don't want to take a penny less than $300, because at some point in the future, we think we may get more for it. However, there is a cost of money. This is the longest expansion in, I'd say, in history. The market's going to give you what the market's going to give you now. So, it's really a question of, do you want what the market gives you now, or do you want to hold off for a better market at some other time? So, I think the $275 is probably the right number. I'm not sure it'll make that much difference, but it could. I mean, are we, so the question in the mind is, if we go below, you know, if we get a bid at $290, are we saying we're not going to sell it because the $300? I think the smarter thing to do is to make that decision at the time, because it's really a, you know, what'd you say? It's a two-step process. We go out, we get, we figure out what the market is, they come back to us, and then we make that choice. I don't think by saying $275 or $300, it'll make any difference at all to the amount of money we actually get for it, because everyone knows it's a competitive bidding situation, and whoever offers the most actually gets it. So, I understand some of you may be wanting to do that. I am actually not going to approve, not going to accept an amendment that lowers that price. I, I think our staff did the right choice. When I look at these numbers, funny enough, I would have chosen $275 as well, which is just a little bit below what the market has, was in 2016. And hopefully, of course, we do better. Other than that, again, I said I think staff did a good job. I think we should go ahead and sell these TDRs. We agreed in, you know, 2009, we would sell the library ones, and, you know, it's time we sold these before the expansion basically ends. So, I, I'm glad we're moving forward and actually doing this. Thank you.
So, essentially, you're saying, let the market decide what the price is, but we'll start at $275.
Well, I'm saying something, I'm saying exactly that, but I'm saying if we don't like what the market decides, the chance to make that decision is when it comes back to us-
Exactly.
And we say, let's not do it.
But you're also calling into, into visibility that this is a good market right now.
It is.
And we should be aware of that. I'd like to welcome Councilmember Koo.
Welcome.
Thank you. Okay. Cory, do you want to speak to your second?
First, I want to just say that I agree with, I think, everything the Councilmember Scharf just said, so I don't need to repeat it all. I'll also emphasize that it's important to take care of community assets, like the building in which Avenidas is housed, and also the services that Avenidas provides. Avenidas, you know, I think most of us recognize the importance of Avenidas, that it is essentially the agency as a nonprofit with strong support from the city that provides senior services. They're the leading senior services provider for the city. We're really partners with them, and that, that is really important for our community. That's going to be increasingly important for our community over time. I don't want to relitigate the question of the expansion and the updates to the building. You know, even though, you know, we may have mixed feelings as a community, or even as individuals, about, you know, an architectural design feature here or there, they're already moving along. I can't remember what the, actually, let me ask staff, do we know when the estimate for completion of construction is? I can't remember off the top of my head. I think it was, but do we have a sense?
2019. I mean, 2020.
Because, the project's going, you could walk by and see the changes-
It seems to be going fast, right? You've seen the, the construction happening. My, and maybe the mayor knows better than I do, but I thought it was the end of calendar year 2019, but that's, that's a guess. I would have to check with the executive director, Amy.
I, I think they have a hopeful opening then, but, you know, it always looks so easy when it first goes up, and then it's the, that last 10% that always takes so much time.
All right. So, on actually a similar timeline to when we're hoping, the other item, you know, that we're talking about with, yeah, the zoo, will, will also be completing. So, late 2019, and then into 2020 should be a, a good year for city facilities and, you know, being reopened, and community assets, I should say, not just city facilities. The importance of what Avenidas provides for our community, I just want to say, should not be underestimated, and the importance of, you know- not be underestimated, and the importance of, you know, what these changes to that building will provide are important, even if we aren't all thrilled with all of the, you know, a design feature, as I said. You know, the building needed the upgrades. It needed the upgrades to continue to provide, you know, quality services for the community. So I hope that we'll move forward with this. I think it's the financially responsible thing to do to preserve and expand community assets.
Okay, Councilmember Tanaka.
I have a few questions. First question is, how many unsold TDRs does the city have?
2,500 right now, which is basically from the College Terrace Building.
Oh, but I thought we also had 9,188 square feet from Avenidas.
Right. If, if you go through the process of what you're asking you to do tonight, then those will become eligible for, to go through an RFP so we can sell them. The 2,500 from College Terrace, they do not, you don't need to declare it as a center site, that's already been done, so that one can be sold. And actually, we did try to sell those in 2010, and there was no market for it.
I understand. I guess maybe to make my question more precise. So how, how many TDRs are there available if we were to make more city sites, center sites? What's the potential? That's my question.
You're saying that of all the buildings that are owned by private owners and city, what's the...
No, just, just the city portion. So like, for instance, Avenidas has 9,200 square feet, College Terrace Library has 2,500, right? And I'm just wondering, okay, are there other buildings or sites that the city has that we can sell TDRs for? And if so, how much is it? How many, how much, how much untapped TDRs are there?
Well, I don't have that information right now. I mean, we sold TDRs from the Roth Building, we sold TDRs from the Sea Scout Building. I can, we can come back to you and answer that question, is to find out, you know, how many buildings are eligible for sale of TDR.
Okay. The reason why I'm asking is because, so for Avenidas, this is $2.5 million, right? Additional funding, correct?
Yes.
And then on, on the Junior Museum, it's another $2 million, right?
Or we want to...
There's, there's $2 million in additional funding request from prior council meetings. The, the expectation is that the Friends of the Junior Museum would come up with half of that.
Okay, okay. So I'm misreading this then. So it's really a commitment of a million dollars?
Yes.
Okay, okay. So that makes more sense. Okay. So that's 3.5 million total. Okay, because I was thinking we were a million short if it wasn't, if that wasn't the case. And so I was gonna ask if there's other, other TDRs. Okay, so that's one question. And then the second question I have for you guys is, you know, for the, in the case with Avenidas, the, the TDRs are mainly going towards Avenidas, right? 2.5 of it. But in the College Terrace Library case, it's not going towards the College Terrace Library, it's going to another, another site, right? So what's, what's staff's feeling on, how do the people in College Terrace feel about, about that?
What happened is general fund monies were used to renovate that facility. So they were taken care of from prior fundings, and it just happened to be that the council was not ready to move forward with the College Terrace TDRs, and we just held them. And by the time we tried to sell them, there were no buyers. At that point, there were also other concerns, because it also included exemptions for parking, and the council did not want to move forward on selling TDRs. So, you know, from our perspective, the College Terrace Library was taken care of with general funding.
Okay. So let's say worst-case scenario, let's say we just do the math, let's say at $300 a square foot, this actually balances, right? It's no net dollars from the city, right? If we, if we, if we sell for $300 per square foot. But if we only get the minimum bid of $275, then we'll be short. We'll be short about $275, so we'll be short about $300,000, right?
I'm not sure what you're considering short.
No, I'm just saying, I'm just saying, so sell the College Terrace Library TDRs, Avenidas TDRs, times $275, you get 3.2 million, right? And you're dedic, and you want us to dedicate 3.5 million, 2.5 to Avenidas, another million to the Junior Museum, right?
3.9 to, if you look at the slide on your screen, if we sell them at $275, if we make the second commitment that you already approved to Avenidas at 2.5 million, then the 7.2 commitment to the JMC project, 3.3 is in a separate CIP that you don't see here, the remaining 3.9 would come out of these proceeds, then you would have a balance, a positive balance of $275,000 for these four items that we're talking about in the motion. The additional $2 million, which includes a $1 million...
No, no, I understand. I'm just trying, I'm just trying, so I, I know that we have this dollars committed, impact fee committed already. What I'm trying to figure out is how we balance it out. So we're, we're, we're gonna increase our spend, or you're asking us to increase our spend tonight, by 2.5 million for Avenidas, another million dollars for, for the Junior Museum, right? So that's $3.5 million net increase, right?
No, we're not asking you to do anything that you already approved. The $5 million commitment was approved prior, in a prior motion, in a different, months ago.
You mean for Avenidas?
Yes.
Oh, okay. When was that?
Actually, that was in 2015, October 19th, 2015. Long time ago, yeah.
Okay, that's why, that's why I do not recall. Okay, 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 I understand that. Yeah, so I guess my point was, just looking at it in terms of, in terms of trying to try and balance this, if we sell for $300, it should be okay. If we don't, then we'll be short about 300K roughly. Okay, and then the other question I have for you guys is, I was looking at slide two, third bullet. And, you know, we just finished our budget meeting a couple weeks ago, I guess last week technically, but a couple weeks ago, we looked at the capital, the CIP budget, and staff was able to actually get the balanced budget in terms of having all of, all of our infrastructures without any new taxes. And so I'm just trying to figure out how, on this page here, it says that we have an infrastructure funding imbalance. Right? Because on finance committee meeting, I was kind of flabbergasted that. We, we just went out for a polling for our infrastructure tax, right? To raise our hotel tax by 14%, and our real estate tax by 33%. And so I was kind of surprised that, you know, at the budget meeting, the CIP, that it all balanced, right? That, that all the projects we wanted, without any tax increases, it all balanced. So I guess then I'm seeing here on page two, that it's now imbalanced. So which is it? Is it balanced or imbalanced?
It depends on how you're looking at it, I guess. And, you know, I, you and I don't speak the same language, so I can't, I can't speak for how you interpret it, but we're $76 million in the hole for the infrastructure plan. There are future revenues that are projected to come in from, for example, the Marriott Hotels. Those are not set in stone. Those buildings have not erected. There, there's no money coming in here. So what we're saying to you is, if those hotels were to come in and fulfill their projected revenues, then we could balance the budget. But that's a big if, and that's not here yet. And that's why we're saying to you, we have a concern that there's the likelihood that it could be closed, the gap, but there's a lot of uncertainty. A recession could hit, and Marriott could choose not to build both of the hotels. So that's the, that's the difference of why we're saying...
I see. So the, so the tax increases are really just an insurance policy in case the revenues that we hope will come in, don't come in?
Well, I think I would state it actually much more black and white, if you don't mind, which is the difference between a plan and a budget. So to your point on the finance committee discussions, it was all about the budget. The budget is balanced. The plan, as you look farther out beyond the upcoming fiscal year, is much larger than the budget itself, and that's the, the imbalance that we're speaking to. It's really, what can we achieve beyond the specific budget that the council is being asked to approve within the next few weeks?
Another way to put it, so maybe it's clear, right now, we're saying, based on, you know, two weeks ago, dollars or so, thereabouts, the gap was 76. If you do not approve this, then you have a, another 2.3, you have another funding gap for whatever the TDR revenues that we estimate that we don't get. That, that adds to that gap.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Holman, and then Councilmember DeBois.
So I was doing some research online to try to answer Councilmember Tanaka's question. I didn't find it in time. Lucy Stern is, I know, one of the other buildings that is city-owned and eligible for TDRs, should we undertake a historic rehab of that facility. There is, there was a list prepared at the time that this, and by the way, with no humility at all, I will say that this, to allow city-owned historic facilities to use TDRs was my suggestion and recommendation several years ago, and then the council adopted it. Because it, and the reason was because it just seemed kind of odd that we would let private developers use TDRs, but the city couldn't take advantage of the same program. So that's my little self-promotion for this evening. But Lucy Stern, for one, and I can't remember offhand what the others are, but there was a list of, not that many, I think it was like maybe nine or 11 facilities. Also, I think, and Allison is here, but the College Terrace Library did not use the TDRs because I believe it was, they didn't need the TDRs. So actually, the TDR ordinance was amended so that those TDRs could be banked for other historic projects, because that's all they could be used for, historic and seismic, because library bond funds covered that. And if you nod your head, yes or no, but I think that's what it was, she, not sure. But that, that's what my recollection is, though, that that's why they didn't need them for this. There was, there was other funding available, and I thought it was library bond monies, but... So I do have another question about the sale of the TDRs. So when the Roth Building TDRs were sold, and I do believe this is correct, and you'll notice on the Sea Scout Building, TDRs, they were broken into lots. There's no suggestion in the staff report to do that with the Avenidas TDRs. And I'd like to suggest that they be broken into lots of 2,500. The reason is because if somebody buys 9,000 square feet of TDRs, yes, they have to satisfy all the ARB criteria, but it becomes a real push to try to get a project to conform, and they have 9,000 square feet of TDRs that they want to pile onto a site. So why is that not a recommendation in the staff report?
Actually, I spoke to Loll about this before we came down here. We definitely gonna break it in portions, and if we break it into six portion, you're looking about sections of 1,900 square feet. If we break it into seven, you're looking about 1,667. If we break it into eight, you're looking about 1,461. We haven't made a decision, but we definitely gonna do that.
If the council wants to give specific direction on that, again, we're open.
And, you know, somebody, if they, you know, they can buy more than one, of course, but the intention here is not to overload somebody and hand a real issue to the ARB.
Yeah, of all the TDRs that we have sold, we have always divided them into smaller portions, so a smaller developer investor could also have a chance to purchase them.
So I'm happy to make that as a part of the motion. That's your, that's your intention, your pattern, but would you like to have that? Will you commit to doing that if we don't put it in the motion?
Absolutely. It's to the benefit of the city, so we will always do that.
Okay, all right, very good.
To put them in lots, which is what we traditionally have done. We haven't, we haven't, we don't have a specific recommendation for you, because we, it's always been something that we've done internally ourselves.
Yeah, it increases the, the buyer pool, and, yeah. To speak to the issue of $300 a square foot as, as the floor, you know, Councilmember Scharf makes, makes a case for leaving it at $275. I don't, I, I still think $300 a foot, and I'll make it as a separate amendment, $300 a foot, that there's, there's a case for that too, because the economy has not gotten any softer. And I think it does set an expectation of, of what the city is anticipating and could generate a good, a good bidding up of, of the price from $300 a foot. So I'll offer as a separate amendment to have it move the starting, minimum starting price from $275 a foot to $300 a foot. No? I seem to be the only one of that mind tonight, but, okay, all right. I appreciate Mayor Niss putting these into two different pools, two different, two different motions, because I think they are separate issues here, so I appreciate that. Thank you so much.
Yeah, so I actually wanted to comment on the $300 versus $275. So I really appreciated, Greg, your comments on pricing. I absolutely thought it was signaling, and that we should signal a minimum of 300, you know, but given our ability to accept a future bid, reject a future bid, I think I'm okay with the $275. Though I would say I still expect bids to come in much higher, and overall, I'd prefer we signaled higher, but I'm fine, fine leaving it the way it is. I do have a question about lots, which, if I, if I have a project and I want to guarantee that I get 2,500 square feet, I mean, does the auction work where I can say, "I will bid this price as long as I can get two lots"? Or, you know, am I at risk of getting one lot, not, not the two that I need?
We've had people submit one price for one lot, and a different price for a different lot. So it just, it depends on what their need is and what they want to guarantee themselves, and that's, I think, why we saw the $405 bid.
But it's a one-round auction, or are there, are there multiple, can you bid multiple times?
No, we do a one, one bid process.
Best and final offer?
Correct. And it's all the, on, you know, it's all confidential, and nothing's open until...
Has anybody ever given you feedback that they would've paid more if they had a chance?
Not really, but...
I just see like there's different ways to do auctions, right?
Also keep in mind, if a lot of bids are coming in at, at the same price, we also have the option of going back to them and asking for a higher price.
Councilmember DeBois, I'm not trying to get us to another discussion, but we kind of did that with the post office, where the post office had a multiple-step bidding process. We bid one number, and we changed our minds, and we pulled out, so that's the other...
Yeah. I'm just saying, you defined upfront, it's gonna be an auction of this format with multiple rounds, just to maximize our revenue. Okay, thank you.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you. So I plan to cast a nay vote on this item. Love the project, don't like TDRs as a financing vehicle. TDRs are fundamentally using zoning exemptions as currency. It's undisciplined. If we want to buy something, I think we ought to find a way to pay for it using actual money.
So I'm, I'm going to speak somewhat not only to the TDRs, but to Avenidas. I, I think we forget that this is in the police building. They're still renting it, I presume, for a dollar a year. The police building went up sometime after the turn of the century. But the seniors' center is the only, the only offering we have that is funded by us for the seniors in our community. And for all of you who are here who are seniors, or for those who intend to be seniors, this is a building that had outgrown its capacity and, and truly, truly needed to grow to accommodate the number of seniors who not only are, are attending the, the center, but also have become far more interested in taking things like yoga, or advanced bridge, and so forth. So this, this fills a very real need, and I've heard from the director at Avenidas that the south, the, the extension, whatever, the annex, is going... the south, the extension, whatever, the annex, is going very well, enough that they would like to consider having a satellite in that part of town as well. So it's a very important part of our community, and it's our senior offering. It is what we can offer to seniors. So it also, I think, has become a landmark, and in doing their remodeling, as you know, they haven't changed the building at all. They haven't changed the front of it. It will look just the same as it did. And I think that's really important, because this is a historical building. And Karen, you might remember when the police, when it was built. I don't remember offhand. The police.
Not that I remember it being built. You just mean that I remember what year it was built. No, but if you do, if you could share it, that would be great.
So I think in doing this, this is one of the better uses of our money. And I would also make full confession, I am their liaison and have been for a while, and so have closely followed the kinds of things they do. They do an enormous amount of fundraising, and if you recall, they had to raise close to $20 million to do this remodel. So two more lights have gone on, Councilmember Fine and Councilmember Koo.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I'll be brief. I'm going to support this motion and probably the next one as well for the second piece. These, as the mayor just mentioned, these are great projects. We're supporting both Avenidas and the Junior Museum. I wasn't planning to speak, but I do want to provide a counterpoint to the Vice Mayor's point about his opposition to TDRs. I would argue these are actually the perfect way to fund services. With growth in a city and new development, you can throw off taxes, and in this case, we're actually just selling the square footage ourselves to pay for important community services and facilities. I think that's a natural way of doing business, and some of the discussion in this town, I think, has really missed that point, that new buildings, new development, yes, new offices, actually fund the services and facilities that we love in the city. And I think that's important to consider as well.
And welcome, Councilmember Koo.
Thank you. I too, I will not be able to support this. I think that it's a community asset. This is a historical building, which housed our police station in the years past, and the renovation or the, actually, the addition is completely opposite of what the current building style is, and it just desecrates the historical aspect of this building. While I believe that the building does require some updates, I agree with Councilmember, I mean, Vice Mayor's comments about TDRs, so I will not be able to support that. Additionally, I think also the increase in the square footage, I find that there isn't parking that is provided adequately for this building, and I have volunteered at the site, but also that the volunteers find it very, very difficult to find parking at the site. So that's a great concern for me. It might not be part of the topic, but there are deficiencies in this project.
So is there anything anyone wants to add to this before we vote, because we're at that point? So with that, would you vote on the board? Oh, sorry, Greg?
Yeah, so I realize that this $5 million was pledged in 2015. Is this in the current budget already?
So the $2.5 million was, for the first installment, the $2.5 was already paid. The other $2.5, you can either approve this motion to sell the TDRs, and if you don't, then our probably recommendation would be to use the remaining balance in the community facilities impact fee to pay for it.
So it's not in the current budget, then?
It's not allocated. The money is there, but it's not allocated. So you have two pots to choose, well, multiple pots, but the ones that we're having you consider is either do the TDRs or the community facility impact fees.
Okay.
So with that, would you vote on the board? Okay, that passes with no's from Councilmembers Koo and Vice Mayor Phil Seth, and takes us to the rest of the motion, and the rest of the motion is number five, which, as we've said before, is approve the commitments described and the attached letter from the city manager and so forth of the zoo. And without any more discussion, I'm going to move approval on that.
I think we already moved it.
No, we separated it.
But we moved the whole thing.
I thought we had made it into two separate pieces. But in that case, then, we'll speak to the motion, which is now part of the first motion, whatever. So.
It's all right. I'm not going to hang up on it.
So looking at this, Councilmember Fine and then Councilmember DeBois. Oh, do you wish to speak to your motion?
I do actually wish to speak to my motion. I've said it several times, I'm just really glad we're moving forward this. And I'm really glad we're going to do the, what do we call it, the tree, the netting? I mean, what's the right way to phrase it?
The netting.
The loose in the zoo. I'm glad we're going to do that. I think that's a great contribution, and, you know, I'm really pleased we're going to move forward with a slightly better project.
Brief, but informative. Corey.
Yeah, as the liaison for, I guess, the last year and a half to the Friends of the J M Z, I know I've said it before, but I've been really impressed by this group, as well as city staff, and the donor community, the generous members of our community, for really working together to come up with an incredible vision. You know, and for those of us who grew up in the city and remember going as kids, or those who have kids who currently go to the current facilities, I think we can, you know, keep those fond memories of what it's been and also look forward to the new and improved version that we're going to have. Also, I've been impressed by the ability to be flexible, to be adaptable, to figure out, okay, what do we keep, what do we change to stay on budget, on time, but still keep the most important aspects of the project? And I think that what we've figured out here and the direction that we're moving forward with tonight is really a good one, and I hope that everybody will get behind this in the community and on the council. So I hope you will vote for it with as much enthusiasm as I will.
Councilmember Fine and then Councilmember DeBois. Done? Tom?
Yeah, I support this motion. Now, I am concerned about overages, and I just want to say, I'm really glad that Vance Brown is doing this project. That gives me some comfort. And I'd really like to urge staff to try to work with them and make sure they're not blocked and incurring additional expense, you know, waiting for things from us.
Yeah, fair question, and we'll do everything we can to be efficient and effective in partnership with Vance Brown.
Okay, Councilmember Holman.
So I'm supporting the motion, but I refer to something that Councilmember DeBois said earlier, and this comes up over and over and over again at this dais, and not everybody who's here this evening has heard these comments about, you know, bringing projects to us out of the context of other projects. So we don't really have a, you know, we have this backlog of infrastructure projects, and yet things are being brought to us one at a time. We're kind of like being spoon-fed our way into greater and greater debt and greater and greater impacts on our infrastructure reserves or maybe the general fund. And it's a very difficult position to be in, because, you know, we have very good projects out in the community, and to bring these topics up, to be fiscally responsible and fiscally sound, and to do our due diligence when it comes to that, it looks like then we're not supportive of projects. And that's not it. But life is a matter of choices and a matter of setting priorities, and this council is not being provided the opportunity to set priorities and to put things in a, on a chart, I guess you could say, to look at, okay, we can do this, but not that, or we can do this, but then we can only do so much of that. And I think the council is not being well-served. I'm being very, very blunt here, but I think the council is not being well-served in being able to look at these issues and these costs, these cost impacts. You know, would the outcome be the same? Very possibly so, but I can't help but say I'm greatly concerned. And even, you know, in the staff report, it talks about going into a deficit on the community center impact fund, you know, without the sale of the TDRs. And we're paying back the infrastructure, excuse me, the community facilities impact fee fund, you know, because of the sale of the TDRs. Thankfully, we have them, as opposed to a couple of comments by other council members. But, you know, people shouldn't take my comments as being opposed to a project or some project. It's just a matter of being able to do our due diligence in a way that makes sense and a way that we can weigh and measure, you know, and balance all the things in front of us. It's not an easy time. We have a great appetite for great projects, and we have a lot of really good projects and ones that the community supports. But this just is not the way to go about it, in my opinion. I'm supporting this because it is where we are, but I don't want to do this again. I do not want to do this again. I've brought it up, and I think other councilmembers have too, but I brought this up, what, at least three times in the last three months? And I feel a little bad saying this in front of so many people here, but I'm not happy. This does not make me feel good to be making decisions like this, in this manner, at all. So with that, going on my little tirade here, I'll end with that. And I do want to thank the Junior Museum and Zoo for raising a lot of money. I want to thank Dick Perry, please say it's Perry, not Perry. I thank Mr. Perry for his support for not just Junior Museum and Zoo, but for many projects in the community. The Perry family has stepped up in a lot of different projects, and it is, I would say, probably, the Perry family is the closest we have had ever to a Lucy Stern in this community. I can't think of anybody else who's come forward the way that you have, so thank you very much.
So I do have to agree with Councilmember Holman on this topic. We're discussing infrastructure funding in our finance committee, and really, I think everything has been parsed out or combined with other things, and we really don't have a good chance to decide on what exact funding are we going to need. We're going to a November ballot asking people to vote. I mean, we're polling for taxes and for fees, and last week, we approved the Charleston Arastodaro without corridor, without really looking at what kind of funding is needed elsewhere. So it just seems like a very segmented way of making decisions on funding. And, you know, I'm relatively new to councils, so I have to say, you know, there are great contributors in our community who have donated funding to many of our projects, but we also have a lot of other community assets that we have to consider. And I think we just finished with our golf course, which was a big thing. Now, you know, there's a lot of money going everywhere, and I think that it's time that we take a comprehensive look at all the funding that we're needing. We have a big topic after this topic, which is the rail. So there's a lot of money that we're needing, and, you know, looking at things in isolation is not going to help us in the long term. So I hope, so I would hope that, so I can't support this, it's got nothing to do with the project, it's more about how are we looking at our overall funding comprehensively and diligently.
So I think there's a misunderstanding amongst a number of council members here about how this actually works. So I've just been listening to how staff isn't bringing this in the right context. So staff has brought this in the right context. We have an infrastructure funding plan. We've talked about funding the Junior Museum and Zoo in this. We've come up with a funding plan to fund what we're voting on tonight. So it's all in context, and as our Director of Finance over there, Lalo, has pointed out, there is a shortfall for an overall infrastructure funding plan. And what we've decided to do as a council so far is move forward and look at the issue of, should we go to the voters primarily on a TOT tax to fund our infrastructure plan? We, if the voters turn us down, or we as a council decide not to put that on the ballot, then we have a shortfall. And then we'd have to look carefully at what infrastructure projects we don't do if the money doesn't come in. And Councilmember Tanaka keeps pointing out that if everything goes right, you could theoretically fund all of the projects without a TOT tax. In my view, that would be extremely unlikely that everything would go right. We haven't finished, until we actually get down and do the, what do you call it, when you actually go out to bid, when you actually go out to bid. So the engineer's estimate of where we are on this and the bids, as a lot of council members have also commented on, have been up to, you know, 20, 30%, 40% off. I think we've made a lot of progress on a lot of this. We don't expect as big a jump. But as we move forward, we're not going to know exactly until you actually go out to bid in an escalating and changing bid environment. And so to answer Councilmember Tanaka's question, that is why we need to put the TOT tax on. Now, we have had council policy that these are the infrastructure projects we're going to do since, I don't know, 2011, 2012, somewhere in that range, when we first did the first TOT tax. So all of this has been in context, and it has been in context for many years. So there is no reason to go through each individual project and decide how much you're going to cut till you actually know you don't have the money, you're going to do it. And the other moving part on this that we really have to keep in mind is that on the public safety building, which I hope I don't hear the same tirade in some ways, and I say that, you know, with all friendliness, when we bring the public safety building to us, which is coming the 11th, and it's going to be, again, would be out of context according to the way Councilmember Holman just said it, it is important that we move forward on that. And it is important that we don't sit back and say, how are we going to think about this in context? Because we don't have any ability to do that, other than to say, we should stop back, stop everything and not do our projects. And it's costing us roughly $275,000 a month on escalations if we slow down on the public safety building. So we could sit and think about how we're going to try and reduce the price here and there and put it, but we have no idea what we should be doing, and the time to do that would actually increase the cost. So I'm not sure what it means to bring stuff back in context. Are we thinking about bringing all of our infrastructure projects together? How much would you decide to cut? So I think it's good that we move forward with Charleston Arastodaro. That's a project the community had been talking about for 20 years, I don't know, 15 years? So stopping these projects midway is not the right thing to do. What's the right thing to do is to execute on the plan, which is what we promised the public and which we've talked about forever. And to complain to staff that they're not doing the right thing is really wrong. I mean, staff is doing the right thing, and I think it's really important that we don't just rail against staff when they are doing the right thing. Thanks.
Councilmember Tanaka.
Yeah, so a quick question about what's on here first, which is, on the last action or last vote we just took, the $2.5 million was contingent on the sales of the TDRs. I just want to clarify that this one also is contingent. So basically, we're trying to do a balanced funding, so to speak.
You're correct. So the assumption is at 275, right, and you pointed out in your earlier comments, if it's 300 or some other number higher, then that generates additional revenue, so that 1.7 number decreases.
Okay, no, because we're splitting this motion apart. I just want to make sure technically that.
You are correct.
This is, we're not just. This is, we're not just taking on this liability without, like, the TDR totally bombed, we're suddenly, you know, in a whole $1 million.
I mean, to be fair and disclose the risk, is if we don't sell the TDRs, then
Okay, I thought that's intent, but I just wanted to make sure, because it doesn't say that here in the motion. So I just want to make sure that's intent, because it's now a split motion. Okay, good. So, yeah, so I guess the way I kind of think about this whole infrastructure and tax is I think about it as if we were thinking about our own household budget. We were, you could think about it in terms of we're adding onto our house, we have maybe X amount of money to spend, maybe $200,000 to spend to add on to our house, and we have our dream list of all the things that we want to do. Now, one way we could think about it is, well, if we have $200,000 to spend, that's what we budgeted, so we need to kind of prioritize what we want, right? Maybe it's a bridge over 101, or maybe it's a public safety building, or Calav garage, or wherever it might be. But if we were doing this for our own personal finances, we would prioritize the list of what we really want and what we could fit in $200,000. So I think, I think, you know, I agree with my fellow council members in terms of, one thing that we're really lacking here is prioritization. It's, I think our voters, our constituents, expect us to do our due diligence, to give it our all, to really make sure that we could fit within the money that we're given and that we're trusted with. And to go back to the voters again for additional funding before we've truly prioritized and really try and make sure that we could fit within the budget that we have allocated, I think is misguided. I think we are not being true fiduciaries to our constituents in making sure that the money that has been trusted in us, that we're spending wisely. And so that's why I keep talking about this, is because we've talked about prioritization, but we have never had the will to actually prioritize.
Greg, whether to do a revenue raising measure is not on the agenda for tonight.
Okay, well, anyways, someone else talked about it, so I would as well. So anyways, I think we should look to taxes as last resort before we skip prioritization.
We will get to that another night. So two quick comments. Scharf, you wanted to make a quick comment?
No, I'm good.
Okay, good. And Corey, you did.
Yeah, I just want to echo and, because I agree with Councilmember Scharf's comments. I want to make sure staff's heard that, not just from one member of council, but multiple members of council. This question of how we fund or parse among our, and how we close the gap for funding for our infrastructure projects, was referred by this council to the finance committee. That's why we're not taking it up every single time we talk about something that in some way relates to infrastructure funding, because we've sent it to committee, we've delegated that discussion to committee. That is not staff's fault, that is our own choice. I just want to emphasize that. So staff is doing what we've asked them to do, and I don't want staff to think that we are critical of them for following our directions. So please keep up the good work.
You know, the council is always critical of staff, that's just part of the rule, right? So I want to take this back, get us out of the weeds for a minute and put it totally in context. I don't think, and Lalo, you've been around a long time, I don't recall that anyone in the community has ever made a $15 million gift to one of our facilities. Am I correct? So really, we're breaking new ground tonight. Having the $15 million from Dick, who is here in the audience tonight, but I asked him if he'd like to be recognized, and he said no, but he's delighted to have made this available. This is going to be a landmark, it's right on Middlefield, it's right next to an elementary school, and next to Lucy Stern. It will absolutely be the kind of place people come to Palo Alto with their kids to visit. There'll be no question, it really is unique. And a special debt to Dick for doing this. We have a great many wealthy people in our community, and no one has stepped forward with $15 million that I could ever think of. Other communities actually have had far more contributions coming from individuals than we have. So I would cast that forth as a challenge to anyone in our community who would like to come forward and support some of our other buildings. So when we do this tonight, we, I think we're actually, we're breaking new ground, we're setting a record, we're doing a whole number of things that I think we should call out to the community as unique. And this will be named, I think this has Dick's name, doesn't it, on the front?
So the city has, and the council has a naming policy, we'll be coming back to council about
With that, yes. So that's under consideration, which I think is excellent. So I think we're fortunate to have this. I'm glad to vote for this to go forward tonight, and I feel confident that staff, you, will come up with the funding that we need both for Avenida and for the zoo. And we're kind of functioning at both ends of the spectrum, covering the seniors and we're covering the school kids at the same time. So with that, would you vote on the board? Would you, I'm sorry?
I'm not following that.
So one last thing, Greg Tanaka, before we break for a minute and we reset this, by the way, that passed with a no from Councilmember Koo. You wanted to speak, Greg, to a no vote on the consent calendar. I wanted to give you an opportunity to do it now.
Yeah, so this was on item six, and the reason why I voted no is because it's a 30% increase in our contract costs. It goes from about $5.8 million to about, yeah, anyways, about a $1.5 million increase, about 30% increase. You know, this, at the same time, we gave the city manager instructions at the finance committee to try to cut $4 million from our budget. So I understand they're going to do a lot more things, but it's kind of like what I talked about earlier, we have a certain budget that we could spend. I think our general fund budget is only increasing by 1.7%. So 30% is 20 times the, 20 times increase of our general fund budget. And so it makes it really hard for us to balance the budget when we allow contracts of this to go up 30% increase from this previous amount. So I think there are a lot of things we want to have, but I think we have to really prioritize what we really need to have, so that the money that's entrusted to us is well spent.
Vice Mayor wanted to make another comment.
Yeah, just real briefly, you know, in a perfect world, okay, we would have perfect information about what are, where all our revenues were going to be and where they're coming from, and perfect information about how all our projects were going to cost, how much our project's going to cost, and we'd all sit down and we'd do the whole thing in one meeting with perfect information. But, you know, that's not the real world, okay? And if we try to wait for that day, then we're never going to get anything done, because there's just way too many moving parts, way too many uncertainties, right? So, you know, the best we can do is sort of thread our way through this as best we can, and that's what we're trying to do here, that's all.
This is extra comment night, Tom?
Yeah, there's just been several comments, so I just quickly want to say again, I think staff has heard from several council members that we have real interest in understanding, I think it's a $76 million potential deficit, it's not trivial. Nobody's asking for perfect information. We referred something to the finance committee to come back and make a recommendation to council. We don't refer things to committee for decisions without coming back to council. And again, I think, at least from my perspective, it's not about, you know, is it this project over that project in terms of absolute priorities, but it's understanding what are our options if we want to complete all these infrastructure projects. I think Councilmember Tanaka has said we need to prioritize, and I think we need to be able to indicate, you know, we'd like to do this project to this quality level, but we're willing to accept some cutbacks, we can make it pending potential revenue, either arriving, not arriving. But again, as a council member, I have a very hard time dealing with these one project at a time, where every single project is over budget. And again, not being on finance committee, I think there's probably several of us who don't have a clear picture of how we're going to meet that $76 million gap. So that's not an attack on staff at all, so thank you.
I do think a lot of this will come out during the budget hearings, am I correct, Chair Scharf?
No, because the budget is a budget and not a plan, and so
But you're going to vote on the CIP?
Yeah, but the CIP is not all of this. Well, I'll let Lalo deal with that. I think, I think the budget hearings are probably not the right vehicle for that, frankly, but I just let staff deal with that issue.
I think what people are asking is just, just a list of what the infrastructure projects are and what we anticipate they will cost, and we know all that.
We know that.
Yeah.
We're not still on the agenda.
Right. So we can put it out each time, just as a handout, so people don't forget.
I think the best time for that handout is when you come forward to us about putting the ballot measure on, frankly.
He could be right. Okay, with that, we're calling this to a halt. We almost made it by nine o'clock. Greg Scharf is going to run the issue that deals with the rail crossings in, probably in about seven or eight minutes. I think it'll take us a few minutes to just rearrange ourselves, and as we have mentioned before, three of us have to be excused on the advice of our city attorney, who has asked the FPPC for a decision on it, but it has not been heard yet. So councilmembers DuBois and Vice Mayor, do you want to say that you will not be participating?
I will not be participating in this discussion.
I'd like to say I'm glad to see a lot of people here tonight on this item, and I'd just like to urge my council members to listen to the community. I think I've advocated for community engagement on the grade separation project, and I just wanted to clarify my situation for the public. So I am still waiting for written opinion from the FPPC, and it's the advice of the city attorney that if I were to participate prior to getting that written opinion, then they will not issue one. So I'm kind of stuck waiting for one. It's not at all clear in my case whether I have a conflict or not, but to avoid any appearance of conflict, I'm going to conservatively recuse myself tonight, and I hope I can participate in future discussions.
Madam Mayor, if I could just put on the record, so thank you for that, Councilmember DuBois. Councilmember DuBois has a rental property interest in a piece of real property within 500 feet of the rail line, and Mayor Nissen and Vice Mayor Philseth have ownership interests in real property close to the rail line, so that, we do need to put the nature of those conflicts on the record. Thank you.
Okay, with that, Councilmember Holman, brief? Do you have a comment about this one or the train?
No, it was taken care of, thank you.
Okay, all right, everyone. Greg, why don't you indicate when you'd like everybody to be back, and three of us are leaving.
So why don't we come back? So why don't we come back in about five minutes? And if council members want to move down, I think that might be fine, too. Why don't you guys just move down this way? Just those three.
I'm...
There's a glossary included in your staff report that defines the terms idea, alternatives for study, and preferred solution. A preferred solution will include one alternative, one preferred alternative for each of our four grade-crossing locations. And we're about midway through this process to get down to one preferred solution today. If you're going to look at one slide in my presentation, I think this is the one that I really need you to look at. This is going to answer a lot of questions I think you're going to have later in the presentation, and we can come back to this. This is an illustration of the different options that are available to us to make improvements at existing grade crossings. So as you're aware, we have four discrete locations in Palo Alto. We have Palo Alto Avenue, Churchill Avenue, Meadow, and Charleston. Each of those are existing at grade crossings. That's the first row in this flow chart up here. The second row is an illustration of the different options that are available. The first is we could do nothing. We could build, we could leave the grade crossings as-is. We could leave them as-is but make minor safety improvements. The second option is to close the at-grade crossings. And you can see the bottom there, there's two variations of a closure. We could close it to all vehicles, bicyclists and pedestrians, or we could just close it to motor vehicles and either leave it open for bicyclists and pedestrians, or build a separate crossing just for bicyclists and pedestrians. The center cell there with the three different variations, those are kind of the typical grade-crossing treatments, grade separation treatments. So you could put the road underneath the existing rail, that's road under rail. You could put the road over the rail, so that would be an overpass similar to San Antonio Road in South Palo Alto. And then there are what are called hybrids. Hybrids are where either the road goes up a little bit, or the road goes down a little bit, and then the rail goes up a little bit, or the rail goes down a little bit. So they kind of meet in the middle. So we have an example of this at University Avenue. If you stand in the distance and look at the University Avenue crossing, you'll see the rail's actually slightly elevated, and University Avenue is slightly depressed. It's not a full road-under-rail treatment. A variation of that would be that the rail goes slightly down, and then the road is elevated slightly. So the reason hybrids are pretty popular, especially along the peninsula, are that they minimize the distance that the rail needs to get up and over the road. And it also minimizes the distance the roadway needs in order to get below the rail. If you were to do a full road-under-rail, the road goes pretty far back and impacts a significant amount of property. So the hybrid is kind of a compromised solution that you'll find in a lot of locations along the peninsula. Most specifically, there's one in San Carlos, in the downtown district of San Carlos, where they have several roadways and a pedestrian-bicycle undercrossing at their hybrid. The next option that's available to us is rail-under-road. So this is meant to represent a tunnel or a trench where the rail is fully depressed and the roadways stay at their existing grade. And then lastly, in the column all the way to the right, you see rail-over-road. And this is where the rail is elevated, either on a berm, or a viaduct, or some other kind of structure, and the rail is fully elevated above the existing roadway grade. So the road does not move, the rail is elevated above. And you can see there's several variations. So when we start talking about whether we're going to raise or lower the railroad, we also think about, have to think about whether Alma Street will be raised or lowered with the railroad, or will Alma Street stay at its existing grade? If Alma Street remains at its existing grade, there's going to be some complications about how the side streets may tie in and how it'll interact with the rail crossing. So after, and you're not meant to be able to read this, this is just an illustration of the universe of ideas that we put together. After all of our community workshops and our community roundtables, we assembled what we called the master list of 34 ideas. And this is, every idea is a good idea. This is all of the ideas that we got from the public. We also polled ideas from existing planning documents. So there was a rail corridor study done in 2014. There were several other planning documents that we were able to pull information from. And we assembled a table that represents the 34 ideas that we heard from the community and from previous planning efforts. You'll see the columns are organized by location. So the left column is citywide solutions. So these are things that straddle multiple grade-crossing locations, or all of the grade-crossing locations in the instance of a citywide option. The next column is Palo Alto Avenue, followed by Churchill, Meadow, and Charleston. And then the rows represent the different options that I just showed you. So these options here are reflected on the axis along the right there. So we have a closure, hybrid, no-build, rail-under-road, rail-under-road tunnel, rail-over-road, berm-viaduct, road-over-rail, and then road-under-rail. So you can see, not all of the options were suggested for all of the different locations. There's a little bit of a variation. Some were seen to work better at some locations, while others were seen to work better at different locations. So in order to get down from the 34 to something more manageable, and that's what we're really here to talk about tonight, staff used an initial screening technique in order to screen some of the 34 ideas and attempt to advance some of the ones that may be more feasible or more likely to advance into final analysis. So the way we did that was we took the criteria that City Council adopted in September of 2017, and this came to you along with the problem statement and the goals for the project as a whole. And this was kind of at the beginning of our second round of public engagement in 2017. So this is the criteria. There's basically three categories: technical, financial, and property and construction. They are broken into tier-one and tier-two, but a very important point is that we did not assign a different weight to tier-one and tier-two during the evaluation, the initial screening. So for all intents and purposes, these are equally weighted in the initial screening. And there has been a lot of discussion about whether right-of-way, aka property impacts, needs to be moved into tier-one. But for the initial screening, that would not affect the results of the initial screening if we were to do that. We created a matrix which listed all of the ideas in rows, and then we used what are called Harvey balls to score each one of them. So there's a highest weight, which is a full green circle, middle weight, which is a half-green circle, and then the lowest weight is an empty circle. And then there are three, sorry, there are two different screening criteria that we saw as fatal flaws. The first being funding feasibility. So if we felt at the staff level that a project was infeasible from a funding perspective, so either all of the potential funding sources that have been identified could not cover the project cost, and/or we did not feel that it would be eligible or competitive for state or federal grant funding, that received a red X under funding feasibility. If it was on the threshold and a little bit questionable, we gave it a yellow X. And then if we thought that it was generally feasible to fund through existing revenue sources and/or potential state and federal sources, we gave it a green checkmark. The other fatal flaw criteria was constructability. So constructability had two components. Things that would have major, major impact, like a project that would require a shoe-fly track, a temporary track, along the entire length of Alma Street through the city. We deem that to be, you know, flawed on the constructability criteria, because we felt that the construction impacts would be so great that it would not be feasible from a constructability standpoint. The other thing we looked at here was could something be constructed within the existing political and agency framework? So a tunnel that would require portals in Menlo Park and Mountain View, for example, that would score low on the constructability evaluation criteria. It would require agreements, you know, intra-jurisdictional agreements, potentially property acquisition in another city, which would be extremely difficult. Other things that weighed in on this evaluation criteria of constructability were the, you know, requirements around design for freight operations on the corridor, Caltrain design guidelines, and other things like that. So we took those 34 ideas, and we ran them through the initial screening, and mainly looked at the two fatal flaws, the funding feasibility and the constructability. And we were able to identify 18 ideas for potential early elimination. So that left us with 16 ideas, which we brought to the Rail Committee on March 21st. At that meeting, there were four ideas identified for elimination. Sorry, following that meeting, we identified four additional ideas for early elimination. And then we were able to combine six ideas into three. And we also added a new idea based on some feedback that we got from Caltrain at our Technical Advisory Committee meeting. We went back to the Rail Committee with that revised list on April 18th, and two ideas were subsequently modified at that meeting. Three were removed, and then three ideas were added. And that left us with 10 Rail Committee recommended ideas, and that's primarily what we're here to talk about tonight. So starting with the 34 ideas, the first thing we did was eliminate these ideas that were deemed to be infeasible from a funding perspective. Next, we eliminated the ideas that were seen to be not able to be constructed under current guidelines, design parameters, and governmental structure. That left us with 16 ideas that we brought to the Rail Committee back in March. We had quite a pretty long discussion at the Rail Committee about whether it was reasonable to keep the no-build options on the table. The no-build options don't really satisfy any of the safety, circulation, or other goals that we have set for this project. But when we move into the environmental phase, we're going to have to study no-build alternatives. So these are technically still in there, but we don't need to really talk about them as a separate idea when we talk about the 10 ideas. So those will always be out there, and we'll study them as we move into the environmental phase. So next, we combined some options. So I won't go through each one of these, but basically if we had an idea that included another idea, we got rid of the smaller idea and just moved, advanced forward, the larger idea, because it already includes the elements of the smaller one. So an example of that is, one of the ideas was to just do a trench under Charleston Road and close Meadow Drive. But there's actually no design benefit to not putting the trench also under Meadow Drive. So we eliminated the one that just included Charleston and combined it with the trench that includes both Charleston and Meadow. And the next series of changes are mostly about combining smaller and larger ideas into one larger idea. When we got to the closures at Churchill and Palo Alto Avenue, we had two variations of each of those. So we had a Palo Alto Avenue closure that would add a new bike-ped crossing at Everett Avenue. And we also had a Palo Alto Avenue closure that would improve the University Avenue underpass. Instead of having those as two discrete ideas, we just combined them into a new idea, which would be close Palo Alto Avenue and make necessary improvements. So as we refine this idea and we start to do more detailed analysis, we'll figure out what improvements would be necessary if we were to close Palo Alto Avenue. So that left us with 10 ideas. We went back to the Rail Committee in April, and the Rail Committee recommended that we add a couple things to the 10 ideas. First of all, the Palo Alto Avenue hybrid, which was intended to be a rail-over-road hybrid. We added "and/or" viaduct to the language, the descriptor of that. So there was an interest in looking at a viaduct option at Palo Alto Avenue. The Meadow and Charleston trench option, we added a clarifier that says Meadow and Charleston trench or tunnel. So as we move this idea forward, we'll look at whether a trench or a tunnel is the best option at that location. We decided to remove the no-builds. This was the recommendation of the Rail Committee. As I said, the no-builds will be analyzed during the environmental analysis phase next year, so we don't really need to show them as separate discrete ideas. And then there were three additional ones added at the request of the Rail Committee. The first is add a citywide tunnel within Palo Alto. So this is a variation of the citywide tunnel that was in the original list of 34 ideas. This would be a shorter tunnel that has entry and exit points within the city limits, so we don't have to acquire property or do construction in Menlo Park or Mountain View. So this is a shorter version of the citywide tunnel. We also added a reverse hybrid at Churchill Avenue. So a reverse hybrid would be where the rail is slightly depressed, and then the roadway is slightly elevated. We already had a traditional hybrid where the rail is slightly elevated and the road is slightly depressed. And then we, Rail Committee directed us to add a viaduct for Meadow Drive and Charleston Road. So a viaduct would be an elevated structure with the rail on it that would cross over Meadow Drive and Charleston Road. And with that, we have the 10 ideas that are recommended by the Rail Committee. Tonight, we're asking you to support the recommendation of the Rail Committee, get us down to these 10 ideas. The next step after that would be to continue to try to get these ideas down to six to eight ideas, and then they would become alternatives for study. And I'll let Rob talk a little bit more about this, but this would kind of be the second phase of community engagement for this project. We see this as much more intensive. We're going to have more, a lot more information for folks. Once we get down to the six to eight alternatives for analysis, we'll be able to provide a lot of the information that the public's seeking in order to evaluate these different ideas and alternatives. And we're hoping to spend the second half of 2018 really digging down and looking at the pros and cons of the different ideas and alternatives.
Thanks, Josh. Rob DeGussi again from the City Manager. I've seen, get fairly new to this project. Pretty interesting one, very challenging, complex in all ways, costly, technically difficult, and high emotions, because, you know, it's how Palo Alto's connected, and there are potential property impacts and other things. So my involvement, which will be more and more so with Josh and transportation, seems to certainly be extremely high priority for the citizens of Palo Alto. So I'm looking forward to working with the council and the Rail Committee and the citizens to try and come up with a solution that makes sense for the most citizens. As a city being at this process for some time, I think because of the complexity, not that any community engagement process would be perfect, and ours has been imperfect too, I would say. One thing that has been helpful for the staff is to actually take some time and sit down with people that are really close to this and have either worked on it before, as prior council members, or just super-engaged citizens that bring in expertise. And we have a number of those in our community, which is pretty special, right? And so we need to take the time to listen and have a conversation. So we're doing small group meetings with five or six people, and we've maybe done seven of those, and that's been especially helpful, more just to hear and listen and understand perspective. And that's informing our work as staff. I think as Josh mentioned, as we go into this next phase, we're not quite there tonight, but we will be there soon, where we're going to spend some real money on different options that are going to be considered, around circulation and other things, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars per different option. We're going to need citizen engagement at a whole different level. And that's part of why we're transitioning to, and have transitioned ultimately, to a new consultant, I think. And with Eileen Goodwin helping out on that, who's done a number of grade separation work in different cities. So working closely with her on a revised community engagement process, excited about that. We'll discuss it in more depth with the Rail Committee in June. I think June 20th is the next Rail Committee meeting. But needless to say, it's certainly going to include some of our most highly engaged citizens as we go through this process of evaluating the four to eight options to study in detail. I have, just for those that are listening or here, and I've talked to a number of different people over the last few weeks, some members of the public think they're too late to the table, and decisions have been made, and I understand that and being concerned about it. But it's actually still a really good time to get engaged as a citizen. And, you know, we're right at that point now of really taking a deeper look at viable options and what the impacts are. So even with what is up on the screen today, I'm sure some of it's probably a little scary to some people, and we need to hear why that is and understand it in order to eventually come to a conclusion of a solution that the community can really get behind. So with that, I'm happy to let Ed or Josh take it.
That really concludes our staff presentation. So stand by to respond to any questions from the council.
Thank you. So first of all, before we go to the public, I was going to ask the Chair of the Rail Committee to put it in context of what we've done, and then I was going to have a short council questions, if there are any burning questions. Then we go to the public, and then we come back to council for, you know, comments, motions, et cetera. Councilmember Wallback.
First, I want to say thank you to staff for the presentation and all the work you've put into this and helping set us up for the next stage of this conversation. I also really want to thank everybody who's here tonight, those listening or watching at home, and those who have engaged with each other, with your neighbors, with staff, and with members of council, whether it's meetings at parks, meetings in people's homes, communicating with us by phone or by email, coming to the Rail Committee meetings, the town halls that we've held. I think it's worth noting the high level of engagement and interest, and the deep dives that a lot of people have already done in our community, the level of expertise that community members have developed on their own, which has been really helpful for those of us who are grappling with this in our position, and I think it's also been very helpful for staff. So I'm really looking forward to continuing to enhance and revise our community engagement with the help of new consultants who are even more experienced in doing that and experts in doing that, to make sure that we're taking full advantage of the info and the opinions in our community, which are going to be helpful for us. I also want to emphasize something that Josh had talked a little bit about, which is this question of that tier-one versus tier-two in our priorities. I think that the way we've been talking about these, you could almost flip the tier-one and the tier-two. I think we've been spending most of our focus actually talking about what is classified as tier-two. I think that has more to do with, you know, how we, or the order in which we identified them. But the tier-two priorities, you know, includes some of the ones that we're most focused on, like minimizing right-of-way, or basically minimizing eminent domain takings. You know, I think we've all been treating that like a tier-one priority, and the first chance we have to, you know, get that agendized so we can actually change that is probably a good one, just to make official the way we've been acting. Actually, I had a couple of questions that I thought would be useful to ask now, for my information, my colleagues, and the public, before we go to the public. First question is, if staff could help us clarify, if you have an understanding, what's the next step to help us get from the 10 or so that we have, you know, by the end of the night tonight, to the smaller number in just about a month? So what do you see as the step to reduce from about 10 to about four, so that by the time we go on break, you and the consultants are empowered to go do those deep and frankly expensive investigations about some priorities, so that we can learn more about what would the eminent domain impact, or the traffic impact, or the visual impact be of those various scenarios that we decide to study over the summer?
So I'll take the first cut at that, and others can certainly expand as needed. The conversations we've now had with AECom and Apex Strategies as they're getting up to speed, I think have been really productive, and they're getting, hitting the ground running. And there's a phrase that our project manager uses called the science, the real science that's necessary as the next step, that is really critical to making progress. And that means getting some baseline information in terms of the physical aspects of the crossings, the locations that we're looking at in detail, some of the existing conditions that they are using for the purpose of laying out the physical dimensions of what we're talking about here. So there are the basic ideas, as Josh has referred to them, that now need to be put to the physics of, you know, grades and the distances involved. And that the AECom team has started to do that. And so we're hopeful that when we come back to the Rail Committee in June, which is just a few days away, but again, June 20th being the next scheduled meeting, that we'll be able to provide some additional information that helps illuminate a number of the alternatives to the level that will help the council take that next cut. So I think that we're hopeful that the AECom team has been able to make progress and will continue that progress between now and then, and be able to provide enough additional information to help eliminate a few more of the options that are remaining on the table.
And so I just want to make sure I'm hearing you correctly. The goal is to move forward with less than a dozen recommendations tonight, have you go work with the consultants, come back with some recommendations for a further cut, probably influenced by the comments you hear tonight, I'm guessing. Come back with a further recommended filter, and then at the currently tentatively scheduled June 20th Rail Committee meeting, the Rail Committee can review that recommendation and then further forward that on to the council. And then prior to the council going on our summer recess, this is our, again, this is the goal we have, prior to going on our summer recess, we would be able to say, here's about four that we want to study in greater detail, and we can authorize staff to move forward with that with the consultants?
Just for consistency and perhaps for, to be clear, the way we've been talking about the next cut, it's been four to eight, or somewhere in that range. So again, depending on the number that we're able to come back with sufficient information that the committee chooses to recommend further screening, then our target would be that four to eight, or six, just to reduce the number of words involved. So we'll see where that number actually lies. Now that said, if we do work off of the June 20th committee meeting date, that really doesn't provide much turnaround time to get to the council, I believe your last meeting is on the 25th of June. So it's really only five days, which includes the weekend in between. So given that, there is a potential that we could go to the committee, possibly get a recommendation, if it is consistent with the committee's feelings, and then come back to the full council at your next meeting in August, or as soon as possible in August.
Well, I think we'd have to look at calendars, but we might want to also discuss whether there's a possibility of holding the committee meeting sooner, so that we could do that four to eight prior to going on the recess. But we can talk more about the timing. But I think that, you know, people are interested in having some, you know, having us move forward as much as we can prior to going on the break.
The one other dimension I would add is, again, as we've referred to a number of times, community engagement, and wanting to ensure that we're able to provide enough information that members of the community, again, who are highly engaged, are able to absorb and understand the information that we're putting forward for the committee to discuss, and again, to be timely in that sequence, coming back to the full council. That said, I will note that the council has an extraordinarily packed docket for June. So you have quite a bit of business, to the point that we are talking about special meetings, simply for the purpose of getting business accomplished that you've already got on your plate.
Okay. And actually, one other question that I think a lot of people have been talking about, and it will, I think, influence how we think about some of these options. This is the question of, it's a complex one, the future of freight on the corridor. As, you know, as a lot of us know, but probably not everybody knows, the need of the Caltrain corridor to carry not only passenger rail, but also freight rail, changes what we're able to do. It means that we need more authorizations, it increases construction costs for a lot of various options that we're exploring. Some people think that there will never be any change, some people think it might be easier to change, but I think most of us who are looking closely think that it's, there's a possibility that the future of freight on the corridor may change, but it won't be easy, and we don't yet know when that might happen. Does staff have any guess, insight, or knowledge about when we might have more information about the future of freight on the corridor, and how that might be relevant to our conversation tonight?
So just to clarify, thank you for that question. So the only impact that freight operations has had on the screening of these alternatives is some of the alternatives that required a grade greater than 1%, which is the current Caltrain design standard. So if the rail goes up or down, we're currently... So if the rail goes up or down, we're currently, Caltrain would prefer that you build no steeper than 1%. Some cities have gotten variances up to 1.25%. There's a variance that was approved for the downtown extension of Caltrain into San Francisco, I think 2+%, but that's not going to carry freight traffic. The 1% is really dictated by the preference of the freight operator, Union Pacific. There is, you know, there's a parallel negotiation that's occurring between Caltrain and Union Pacific about potentially introducing a third-party freight operator. We don't know what parameters they'll be willing to operate under, whether they'll be able to accept a steeper grade. But the bottom line is, we don't own the rail corridor. The Peninsula Corridor Joint Powers Board owns the rail corridor. And if we're going to build structures or tunnels or viaducts or anything in there right-of-way, we're going to need to work with them and adhere to their guidelines as best as possible. We can ask for variances and we'll be talking about that as we move through this process. There's some ideas on the table that would require variances from Caltrain, specifically around the grade.
If I could add also, just in terms of the implications of freight, it may sound relatively, maybe for the uninformed, relatively trivial, a difference between a 1% and a 2% grade, but certainly when considering any of the options that have a significant vertical dimension to them, most specifically, I think, a tunnel, that the cost implications of that difference really would be significant. And so that is certainly a relevant topic and as Josh points out, one that's currently, well, really is out of our control, but definitely one for us to continue to track.
Yeah, well, I guess my question was, do we have any sense about when we might have more information about how those negotiations are going? And parallel to that, is there anything we can do to be more influential? I mean, we talk a lot about our lobbying efforts at the state level, on bills, at the federal level on bills and grants and things. Is there a way that we can be helpful in encouraging flexibility with the steepness of grades? And do we have any information about whether by midway through the remainder of the year or by the end of the year, we'll have more information from Caltrain?
Well, you know, I don't know. We can check up on the status of the third-party agreement. I think we checked a couple of months ago and it was still in process. As far as from a legislative, as far as any legislative remedies to this, I think it's fairly limited. UP is a private operator who has vested freight rights to this corridor. So the only option to kind of get them out of the picture would be to purchase the freight rights from them. And that was a question posed by the Rail Committee several meetings ago, and I did look into that. And there's been no estimate generated about what that would potentially cost. And we are going to dig a little bit deeper and see if there's been any similar purchases of freight rights in recent history. That might be a good rule of thumb, but the information is really not out there about what the cost would be to buy out UP.
And I would only add that I think in the context of state rail plan, there has been some longer-term discussion or concepts of routing of freight. So it's really not imminent and not something that we could be very specific as to timeframe for decision. I will say that having dealt with Union Pacific Railroad a number of times over my career, that they do not typically move quickly. And time is not a priority for them.
Yeah. Well, I guess what I'd say just at this point is that that's probably something for us to keep working on. What we might do is work on that in parallel to make our decisions. So I'm curious what my colleagues and staff think, but perhaps looking forward over the course of the next several months and trying to get to a preferred scenario by the end of this year, perhaps we would end up with a couple of alternatives. One, if we get the 2% allowance, and one, if we don't, because that might change the cost and other factors quite substantially. So with that, I'll turn back over to the Chair of the meeting.
Thank you. I have no lights. If there are any quick questions, if not, we'll just go to the public. Councilmember Coop.
So there was a claim, so we received a note at council claiming that the California Public Utilities Commission said that there's absolutely no prohibition on rail capacity expansion beyond the six trains per hour. Is that true? I mean, I'm just trying to kind of figure that out because it came through our email and I just want to verify that so we can lay that to rest or we can make the correction.
So the California Public Utilities Commission, the CPUC, is responsible for regulating the safety of railroads in California. They would only have input as to the frequency of trains, in so much as that relates to the safety of the operation of the corridor. So I'm not aware of any ruling like that. I mean, I could look over the document that you were sent, but the CPUC really only focuses on the safety, primarily at grade crossings and with signaling and other features of a railroad.
So it would be something to look at, simply because I do want that question to be put to rest because I don't understand from the past that there was any kind of prohibition, prohibition, yeah. So thank you. And then, was it another thing I wanted to find out was, Councilmember Wallbug's question in terms of coming back to us, the timeline. So between now and the next Rail Committee meeting, is there any reach out to the general public in terms of reviewing the different designs? Or even if you have cut it down to four to eight or whatever AECom has said, are you taking that out to the community first so that we can hear their input when you come back to the Rail Committee? Or is, yeah, please.
At this point, we don't have anything scheduled for broader community input. We do want to spend some time with AECom team, including Eileen Goodwin, to come up with the strategy for how to best do the engagement in this next phase. We really do anticipate that it would be most effective once we're down to the four to eight rather than in getting there. Because again, based upon some initial work that AECom has done, we think that some of the alternatives are likely to demonstrate more property impacts than the council might want to proceed with at this stage. I think as soon as we lay out, again, the science of that, some of the grades, that we may be able to eliminate some of the options.
I mean, I think that's a great concern for me because as Rob had said, we have some very well-informed residents and they have been actually very significant in guiding us through the decisions and what are different options here. So I would really ask you to kind of consider, when is the community engagement part of AECom's coming up? I'd really like to see that on our calendar, also with our community. There was another thing that I wanted to ask in terms of the freight. Somebody wrote in and gave actually a really good idea, which was that the tunnel goes underneath and the freight is on top, so we keep the freight at grade since freight doesn't come as often as Caltrain will. So it won't impact the grade separations and traffic congestions as much. Is that an option that you might be able to kind of?
That would be a variation of one of the ideas.
It's already in there, right?
That's in the 10 ideas, the citywide tunnel. That could be a variation in that idea that we could look at in a little more detail, if that ends up being one of the four to eight.
One of the motions, right? Okay.
I would note the trade-off there, that in large measure, the advantage of the tunnel that has been discussed has been the opportunity to develop at the surface level, whether it be potentially revenue-generating development that would be used to pay for the tunnel or open space for other uses. So I think neither of those would be possible if freight remained at surface.
And can you give me, would you be able to bring back the analysis to show why it's not possible? And, you know, I mean, we really haven't explored funding at this point, so it would be kind of nice to kind of explore everything before we kind of say it's not feasible. I guess that's what I'm kind of going with, thinking long-term. I don't suppose you can eminent domain freight, I mean, the Union Pacific now, can you? Anyway.
The railroad existed before Palo Alto insisted, so the answer is no.
And they tell us.
So I have an answer to your first question about CPUC. I'm reading the email that you received. So currently, Caltrain has what's called fixed block signaling, where there's a limited, there's a certain number of blocks along the corridor and only one train at a time can be in each of those blocks. There may be a capacity limitation because of that old signaling technology, but Caltrain is upgrading its signal to be what's called rolling block technology, where there's actually just spacing between the trains and that'll allow them to more closely space their trains. They have said all along that they could go up to 20 trains per hour combined with high-speed rail or without high-speed rail. So, you know, a lot of what's in this email is correct.
So thank you so much, Josh, for clearing that up so that we can know that it is coming.
Councilmember Fine.
Thank you. Thank you very much for the report tonight and for all of the work on this over the past two years. Couple of quick questions and some comments. So one, just to follow up on Councilmember Coop's question, and I just want to validate with staff, it's my understanding that the PUC would require grade separations at a certain frequency of train levels. It's not that they would prohibit them, they would actually require us to do some kind of grade separation treatment once we're approaching some threshold of Caltrain service.
So they have a statewide grade separation program. It's called Section 190. And they prioritize, there's a list, I think, of the top 10 grade crossings, at-grade crossings in California, and they're ranked by the number of collisions and number of trains per hour and a whole host of other factors. And there's a little bit of funding that's dedicated to that, but the CPUC couldn't mandate something without providing funding to support that. So there is a list and they do identify the at-grade crossings with the biggest safety concerns. And if you get on that list, you are eligible potentially to secure some state and even some federal funding. But, you know, they couldn't really mandate an existing railroad to grade separate without providing some type of funding.
Okay, thank you. Another question, or I guess you kind of did answer it, I completely want to echo Councilmember Coop's questions about the engagement piece. And I think on page 25, the second bullet point is a really important one, so I would just encourage the city manager and your team, Josh, to continue defining what this enhanced engagement piece looks like. I suspect many of our speakers tonight will be asking what it looks like and asking in some cases for a stakeholder group or some other kind of focus group where the Palo Alto community can help inform this decision, help react to it, and also provide a basis for us to prepare the community for what's actually coming in terms of the construction, in terms of financing and all those pieces. So I would also appreciate seeing it on our agenda at some point in the near future, whether it comes to rail first, I'm agnostic.
I would like to note that we, just to confirm, that we do have that on your docket for the June 20th agenda.
Excellent, thank you. And then just one last follow-up piece on that. I think it is really important that we have community engagement to inform this process, to inform staff, and also to buttress our new consultant in AECom. My other question is, what are we doing at the state level in terms of reaching out for other funding mechanisms or partnerships that might help us get this done?
At this point, I don't think that we've been focused at state funding. We have been really beginning to increase our participation among all cities along the corridor through the local policymaker group that you're participating in, along with Councilmember Scharf, and that that does represent a coalition of common interests that we believe could be helpful as we proceed.
Okay. That's good. I would just note, a number of people have asked us, what are we doing with sometimes our lobbyists? And they brought it up in the Rail Committee meetings and that might be something for us to look at going forward.
Certainly.
But nothing requiring.
Yeah, and I would just add that every chance we get to suggest that funding be dedicated to grade separations, we do that.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Those are my questions for now.
Councilmember Tanaka.
So you guys touched on this briefly, but I wanted to understand this better. So overall, it looked like a very comprehensive process that you guys did to kind of narrow down the technical solutions. But I think at the same time, what has to also happen is on the funding side. So I think a lot of my colleagues have talked about this already, and you guys talked also a little bit about various funding sources, but it seems like we need just as comprehensive a list of potential funding sources and seeing how the community's willing to do those or not do those, right? So it could be property tax, right? It could be selling TDRs. It could be going to the federal government, state government, and there's also probability of it happening, right? Because law these, maybe the federal government will give us no money, right? Don't know. But I guess, to me, that process needs to be in parallel to what's happening right here because without that, without the money, not much is going to happen. So I guess, what's the funding process going to look like in terms of really understanding what funding mechanisms are feasible to make these projects happen?
So the initial screening, one of the criteria was funding feasibility, and that was a fatal flaw. And what we did for that is we looked at the financing white paper that was prepared. There was a financing white paper prepared in 2017 that looked at all of the potential funding sources for grade separations, including development along the rail corridor, different types of taxing, property taxes, sales tax, business taxes. If we thought, if we looked at all of those potential funding sources and did a staff judgment call as to whether a project would be likely to secure state or federal funding, if all of those funding sources plus the potential state or federal funding was still well below the estimated cost for the idea, we gave it a poor score on the funding feasibility criteria.
Yeah, I guess what I'm trying to say, it's not so much, I think you're doing the funding kind of in conjunction with this, right? But I guess what I'm saying is, there's a lot of different funding sources that are possible. So for instance, let's say, for instance, there's a property tax, right? That could go to any one of these potential ones, right? And that's kind of totally orthogonal, right? It's totally, you know, it's independent of any of these ideas. But then maybe the community would just absolutely not do a property tax, they'd be totally opposed to it, right? For instance, right? And so that's off the docket, or maybe they would be, maybe a certain amount they would be, right? Or maybe, and there's a whole bunch of different funding potential. So I guess I'm just trying to understand why not do the same process you did here to kind of whittle down potential grade separations? Why not also do the similar process? Because I think a white paper, I mean, unless they could really read everyone's minds in Palo Alto, is really not going to know what the community's going to be, yes, be willing to do or not willing to do, right? So for instance, a property tax, maybe no one's willing to do that, right? Or maybe a certain amount, or maybe there's a sales tax or whatever, right? There's a whole bunch of different funding mechanisms, or selling TDRs, right? Maybe the community wouldn't be willing to put up with that, or maybe they would be. But I guess, I'm just trying to understand why not, why not, because these funding sources are, some of them are tied to the project, right? Like grant funding, or you've got to do it a certain way, otherwise it's not going to, so some of them are absolutely tied to a particular idea, but some of these are totally independent of what happens on this. So I guess I'm trying to understand why, what is the process? It sounds like there is no process or?
I think you used the term whittling, whittling down, and so I'd like to respond in that context. So I think it's a good metaphor. We are looking at different piece parts that could be used to attack the funding issue. One is looking at funding that is already available, that's in particular the VTA Measure B. And again, while recognizing it's currently being held in abeyance, we are now in active discussions with other cities, Mountain View and Sunnyvale and VTA, as to how to ensure that Palo Alto receives its fair share. fair share of that funding. Another is, as mentioned earlier, with Caltrain, the local policymaker group is a primary forum for, venue for the discussion of the upcoming Caltrain business plan, in which Caltrain itself is also attempting to identify its role, that it will have with respect to grade separations along the line. So, and while recognizing arguably there is some competition among cities, that part of the calculus here is to position Palo Alto to have enough clarity on the projects that we're bringing forward to be competitive for that funding. And finally, to your point on local funding, whether it be some form of tax or what have you, we have really attempted to be strategic in terms of the level of definition, again, kind of a chicken and the egg issue in terms of asking people what willingness to pay there is, without, at this point, being able to provide a very clear picture of what it is that they would be paying for. So, that's where we have had some light touch. Question in the prior polling that was done, that was not, I'd say, really very optimistic in terms of the level of funding that voters are willing to support, without a great, a great deal more clarity as to what the project would be. So, that's kind of the, I think, the dilemma that we're currently at, before getting very specific in terms of what local funding might be, while at the same time recognizing that we're both in competition, as well as seeking coalitions and seeking funding from others.
Okay. The other thing I was wondering about is, has any study been done, or where are we at in terms of, like, because I hear sometimes people talk about doing eminent domain to make some of these options happen. Where are we at in terms of really understanding the true costs, right, in terms of if there's lawsuits about it, and, you know, the cost of acquiring a person's property? And, you know, I've had several office hours on this topic as well, and people always ask, well, so, what, if you do eminent domain of my property, how much, how much would I get for it? Is it market rate? Is it less than market rate? Is it more than market rate? Like, and so, I guess I'll be interested in knowing where we're at on that topic.
Right. Acquisition of public, of private property requires market rate. And so, and that would hopefully occur through a negotiation and a voluntary sale. If not, then the government does have the power to initiate a process, but that does also still involve payment of, of market rate, and that can be litigated if there's a question about what market rate is.
Sure. So, and can I assume that if there's, if any of these options include eminent domain, that there's also the cost of acquiring the property, creating the litigation, and...
Yeah, the, you know, as we get down to the four to eight alternatives for a study, there'll be detailed cost estimates prepared for each of those alternatives. That'll be part of the discussion, and that'll include, you know, our best guess at the right-of-way cost.
I would like to clarify, or maybe just expand a bit, in terms of, you referenced the eminent domain, that it's not simply an all or nothing in terms of acquisition of a property for the purpose of, if it's needed for a roadway or a grade separation. There could be property rights that are involved, where there would be access to one street or another, or even subsurface easements that might be needed in the case of a trench. We talked about tiebacks that might be needed, rods that would be underground in order to secure a retaining wall, and again, that could go under property. So, there could be a variety of forms that property rights need to be acquired, and temporary construction easements as well. So, there may be the need to access a property during construction that would not have a long-term need, you know, not a permanent need to have access to a property, but would be needed during construction. So, any or all of those, quite frankly, could involve eminent domain, if the property owner is ultimately unwilling to sell the rights that would be needed for the project.
So, my final question here is around Menlo Park. So, I think Menlo Park sent us a letter asking about what we're doing on this. Have we responded to that, or what's our plan around that?
So, we're in close coordination with Menlo Park staff. Their council did identify a preferred alternative recently, but they also directed their staff to pursue regional conversation around a trench or tunnel. So, we'll continue working with the staff in Menlo Park and see if there's any way to collaborate on any of our projects.
Councilmember Holman?
You know, I'm going to wait, because we have 23 speakers, and it's 10:20 in the evening. They've been here very patiently waiting, and I want them to have the maximum amount of time to speak, so I'm going to hold off.
All right, that's great. I did have one quick question. On the Palo Alto Avenue viaduct, would that require collaborating with Menlo Park to be at the higher level?
Yes, it would. And we're having our consultant do a very preliminary look at that, to see if the grades would work, and if we actually have the right-of-way to construct over the creek, because the bridge has been designated a historic landmark, and we also have El Palo Alto on the east side, so it's a pretty constrained area.
So, does a viaduct make that easier than doing the hybrid, or the, than doing the hybrid, or does it...
We're going to look at all of the details on that. We're hoping to actually have some preliminary information on this one for you on June 20th at the rail committee meeting.
So, that's what I was going to, going to really ask you to do, and sort of where I was going to go with that, is, it seems to me that a lot of these decisions are ones that really don't take a lot of expertise from the community. And I'll give you an example. It seems that once we get sort of a cursory look at the Churchill Avenue reverse hybrid and the Churchill Avenue hybrid, that first of all, one of those will have less eminent domain than the other ones. And when you come to council and say, you know, this is going to take X number of homes, council's going to decide, hey, we don't want to do that. Let's go with the Churchill Avenue closed and improvements, or partially open, frankly, depending on how those safety issues go. So, I think some of these decisions council could make earlier than later, given the obvious impact in the community, and given the obvious, I would encourage you, for instance, when we look at the Meadow and the, Meadow and Charleston, to engage the community in the viaduct discussion. I mean, if, you know, if the community is really opposed to a viaduct out there, I mean, I think that's something is really good to know early. And I think the notion of a trench or a tunnel, I assume there's one choice that is probably more viable than the other choice, and so, that easily narrows it down. I also was wondering the questions on, well, I think, I think you get that point, is that I think it's very much easier to narrow some of this stuff down in anticipation, without really making choices that circumscribe what the community wants, to some extent. The other thing I would say is, the citywide tunnel, I think, is in a class on its own, and I think it actually distracts, frankly, from the other options that we would go. And I think we as a council have to think hard about how we want to deal with that. So, my recollection from rail is this, and I'm just going to ask you for the numbers. What did the white paper say it would cost to do the citywide tunnel? Just let me finish. You don't have to have the exact number, Josh. Was it $2.5 billion or $2.8 billion?
I think it was like 3.4.
Was it three, it was like 2.8 to 3.4? I think that's correct. So...
Was I right?
3.4?
3.24.
3.24. So, you know, my other recollection from that is that when we looked at all the financing options laid out, if we imposed every single tax that we could come up with on that list, when we did, because we did do a list in rail of all possible five options, we would still not raise enough money. And I think that's an important, an important thing to think about in your mind, that there is probably no way to fund this, and it suffers from a real fatal flaw of that. And we kept it on here from rail, primarily so that the full council could have that discussion about it. And I'm not suggesting we kill it tonight, but I really do think we have to think long and hard about how we deal with this. Do we kill it next time? Is there information we need from staff? What does that look like in how we decide whether or not we're going to go with that? Do we ask questions like, like, we're now starting this within Palo Alto. Does that make it significantly cheaper? And I think a lot of this doesn't have to be to the penny. I think it can be if we're at 3.25 billion, you know, unless we can get it down to like a billion and a half, which I don't even know how we'd raise that kind of money, it seems really hard to imagine how we move forward on the citywide tunnel. So, I do think that, so, the reason I'm coming up with and saying this is that staff indicated that for every option we study, we could well spend a quarter million dollars on each option. So, what I do think we want to do is, we would like you to, at least I personally, I'm not going to speak for everyone, I would like you to spend money on, on saying, I wouldn't need you to tell me to the penny what it would cost. I would need to know, okay, if we don't run freight on it, you know, do we get to cut off $100 million, or do we get to cut off $500 million, and what's your level of confidence? Is that at 80%? Because frankly, as I said, if I don't think we get below $2 billion, I don't really think it's a viable option, period, no matter what kind of financing structures we talk about. I mean, when you take the population of Palo Alto, you take all the corporations that work here, and you talk about raising that kind of money, I don't think it's possible. And then, you'd have to ask yourself, if we really were going to spend $3 billion on something, is this the $3 billion we would spend to make Palo Alto the best city we could possibly have? I mean, maybe, I mean, but $3 billion is a lot of money. So, anyway, with that, I think it's time to go to the public. We have a large number of speakers. We have one group of five. You'll get seven minutes, and then we'll get two minutes for everyone else, and I think we'll probably finish the speakers after 11, frankly. So, our first speaker is Parag Patkar, speaking for five people. Come on up.
Thanks, Greg. So, first of all, my name is...
You should speak right away.
First of all, my name is Parag Patkar. I live on, in South Palo Alto, between Charleston and Meadow, right by the tracks. And I'm here representing about 300 or so folks who we went out and got signatures. A lot of my neighbors helped out, and we did this in about six days, an entirely volunteer-led effort. So, and I'll actually distribute these, these petitions to you.
So, essentially, I was going to speak, speak to the petition. So, for a lack of a better title, I'll call my speech "Bury the Rail." The petition actually speaks about four points, that all 300 of us have agreed to. The first one is, we strongly oppose
eminent domain. We ask that the city negotiate in good faith. The second option, the number two on my list is, we strongly oppose all raised options. So, no raised rail, no raised road, no berm, no viaduct, no Berlin Wall. That's number two. Number three, we do support lowered rail options, a trench, a tunnel, probably even better, but we are open to both. Number four, our community has a lot of cyclists and pedestrians who go through Charleston and Meadow, all the way to the other side, to gun, termin, Juana, Briónes, so on and so forth. And so, safety of pedestrians and cyclists is, is of paramount importance. Over the next few months, we would like to engage with all of you, Josh, Rob, and get more information around three specific options. The first one is trench with and without freight. Number two, tunnel with and without freight. Number three is road under rail. So, we'd like, you know, the obvious information on those three options, costs, property loss, and traffic impact. To Greg Tanaka's point, we also would like to see how these options would be funded, and we would, of course, like to see if, you know, property holders will be burdened additionally with property taxes and so forth. Then, lastly, we would like to contribute to the agenda ahead of time, to rail committee meetings, to council meetings on this topic, instead of being, you know, passive recipients of information coming out from your professional staff, as well as the council. We would like to sort of contribute to the agenda ahead of time, be more proactive in these discussions. That's, that's all I've got to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. You still had three and a half minutes, but thank you very much. Our next speaker is Niva Yarkin.
So, good evening, City Council. My name is Niva Yarkin, and I live on Churchill Avenue. Looking back at the history of Oregon Expressway in 1962, which destroyed 90 houses for this development, City Council at that time put it on the ballot to let the voters in Palo Alto make the decision. The expressway was approved by a narrow margin. This controversy divided Palo Alto from north to south. In a perfect world, in theory, a stakeholders' group would be ideal, but in my opinion, that is not realistic. Crossings need to be completed before the trains start coming in the year 2023. That is five years from now. Looking at the Churchill Quarter separately, building an underpass for cars on Churchill would take 36 homes alone on just this one crossing. Building an underpass for only pedestrians and cyclists would take no houses. An example would be Homer Street Underpass. Any kind of hybrid option is taking houses. The reverse hybrid overpass or underpass is also taking houses. Churchill is just one crossing out of four. I'm sure the other crossings have similar problems. Again, I stress, there is a time limit. Caltrains will build whether the crossings are finished or not. Please weigh the train options carefully, because if it was your house that was on the chopping block, I'm sure you would be standing where I'm standing now, defending your property. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And our next speaker is Carolyn Schmarzo.
Oh, good evening, City Council. I would like, Carolyn Schmarzo, I would like to detail my reasons for opposition to the use of eminent domain to propel this train project. They are as follows. Number one, it is poor use of our limited funds. The estimated cost of property acquisitions is up to $200 million. That's even before demolition and the cost of hammer and nails. Number two, the loss of revenue. To eliminate 36 properties means that there are 36 fewer households paying property taxes, and property taxes fund our public schools. Our public schools are already $2 million in the red, and it's a looking redder. Number three, makes Palo Alto vulnerable to expensive lawsuits, not only victim, from not only the victims of eminent domain, but also from its neighbors, whose homes will suffer diminished returns as the result of being located in a major construction/deconstruction zone. Number four, health hazards. The demolition of so many homes will result in toxic air and particulate pollution. Number five, noise pollution. There will be no trees to absorb the deafening sounds of either the construction or the deconstruction. Number six, psychological trauma. To lose your home for any reason is hideous, but to watch it bulldozed against your will is a soul-bludgeoning experience, and it's another reason for another lawsuit. Number seven, discourages investing in residential property in Palo Alto. Sure, you can renovate your home here, invest in it, your life in Palo Alto, and suddenly you, your home, your family, and your dog become an inconvenient truth in the way of big development. Make sure Ken DeLeon puts that in his videos about life in Palo Alto. Number eight, it eradicates history in Palo Alto. To destroy an old and established neighborhood, I'm almost done. I'm fast.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Let me do my last, okay? Please. I've waited three hours. Thank you. It destroys the established neighborhood, destroys part of the, destroys part of the Palo Alto story, and along with it, any sentiments of loyalty and connections and the values that it once had. Eminent domain attacks our life, liberty, and pursuit into happiness. In this, I beg, I plead, I urge, City Council, the rail committee, that you demolish no homes to make way for trains. Thank you.
Thank you. Bob Moss, to be followed by Mary Sylvester.
In the staff reports, which are...
In the staff reports, which are part of this packet, two basic bits of information are missing. It makes it very difficult to have a real evaluation of the pros and cons of these eight options. First of all, the costs are not specified. No, you're not going to know the precise cost, but we can get estimates of what each of these is going to cost, so we can evaluate them. Secondly, the number of homes which would have to be taken with each of these options is not mentioned. And that makes a difference. Some of the options may not require taking any homes at all, and some may require taking quite a few. So unless you know that, you can't properly evaluate what's better or worse. That being said, I'll give you my personal suggestions for what you should be looking at and what you should be ignoring in these eight options. I would oppose the closures of Palo Alto Avenue and Churchill Avenue. That would divert more than 25,000 vehicle trips per day to other streets. And we don't have much street capacity in Palo Alto. We have a traffic problem already. This would make it much worse. I would prefer the citywide tunnel. Now, when you give the cost of the tunnel, you also should take into account the fact that this creates some land along the railroad right-of-way, which presumably can be sold and used, for example, for housing. The value of housing property in Palo Alto is about $9 million an acre, so that should be deducted from the cost of putting in the tunnel. I don't think it's going to make a big difference, but it makes some difference. My second option would be the railroad under the road, particularly at Meadow and Charleston. I think that preserves a lot of the environment and does less damage to the neighborhoods. Consider these things carefully and evaluate all the impacts of making these various changes, not just some of them.
Mary Sylvester, to be followed by Barbara Haslett.
Good evening, Council members. My name is Mary Sylvester, and I'm a 40-year resident of Palo Alto. I'm here tonight to speak about grade separation at the four intersections, as well as the proposal to consider the widening of Embarcadero Road. My comments are not technical, nor are they data-driven. It is a plea, essentially, not to pit one neighborhood against another. Please take eminent domain off the table and do not widen Embarcadero Road. These need to both be taken from consideration. Residents of Churchill Road, as well as along the corridor, have worked hard for the last six months to come up with a meaningful set of guiding principles to assist the council in your decision-making. Pedestrian and bike safety must be given the highest priority. The integrity of community neighborhoods must be protected, and no homes must be taken. There are many options that you must consider, and I don't envy the choices you have to be making. Please protect people's homes and their way of life. At the same time, do not put residents of Embarcadero Road at risk for their quality of life. Residents on Embarcadero Road have had to bear a disproportionate amount of Palo Alto's development burden. Now, should we have road closures, they may also be asked again to accept increased traffic and road widening. We need to focus more on a TDM, and in some, please strike eminent domain, as well as Embarcadero Road widening. Let's not pit one neighborhood against another. Thank you.
Barbara, Barbara Haslett, to be followed by Ryan Globus.
Good evening. My name is Barbara Haslett. I'm a 38-year resident in the 1100 block of Emerson Street. I'm here to voice my and my Professerville and Embarcadero Road neighbors' vehement opposition to any proposal involving the widening of Embarcadero. We have just heard about the possibility of widening Embarcadero at the Alma undercrossing as a trade-off for possibly closing Churchill. We began organizing this weekend, walked our neighborhoods, distributing hundreds of urgent flyers regarding this issue, and are getting lots of support. A widening of the underpass would attract many more thousands of car trips along the entire road and encourage more speeding. For now, the proposal does not include the taking of houses, but it is just the first step. This is the canary in the coalmine moment for our neighborhoods. Some of my neighbor, neighbors have heard the widening proponents talking about urging the city to use eminent domain to buy setbacks along Embarcadero. That would take out parts of many houses, major trees, and render the entire street unlivable. We definitely do not want Embarcadero Road, a residential arterial, to become Embarcadero Expressway. As other speakers have mentioned, that's what happened 50 years ago when City Council eminent-domained more than 100 houses on Oregon Avenue and made an expressway with a cloverleaf at Alma. Embarcadero sidewalks carry tremendous bicycle and pedestrian traffic for our schoolchildren and neighbors. This proposal is a dangerous safety concern and in direct contradiction to the city's comprehensive plan, which aims to make Embarcadero a better, safer, multi-mode road. Please, we implore you, to delete the reference to widening Embarcadero as any part of your considerations. Please preserve our neighborhoods. And thank you, Councilwoman Coe, for mentioning that community engagement is clearly, is critical. Clearly, it is missing in this going-forward process. Thank you.
Rachel Kellerman, or Ryan Globus, to be followed by Rachel Kellerman.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Ryan Globus. I'm a resident of Midtown. And every single week, I both take Caltrain to work and drive to work, depending on the day of the week. And I want to talk about two things. One, I want to thank you for making the difficult choices to grade-separate. And I also want to talk about the tunnel. I didn't realize that no build was taken off the table. But I just wanted to emphasize the importance that when there is an accident at a grade crossing, it can cause incredible disruption to tens of thousands of people from San Jose all the way up to San Francisco, causing hours of delays and incredible frustration, which causes people to drive instead of taking the train. And as you're all probably well aware, there are far too many suicides on this corridor. And studies show that if you make it more difficult for people to commit suicide, give them a second for, to rethink, for loved ones to reach out to them, we can save lives by doing this grade separation. So thank you for doing this. Secondly, for the tunnel, I don't think we should spend so much money studying it. It's wildly too expensive, as some of the council members have pointed out. And we also need to factor in that electrification of Caltrain is only going to San Jose. Going down to Gilroy will not be electrified, so some of the trains will still be diesel. And so I'm not sure what the plan is for the stations to be in the tunnel underground. But we need to seriously consider proper ventilation for these diesel trains. And if that's infeasible, we should just eliminate the tunnel option completely. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Tom, Rachel Kellerman, followed by Tom Kellerman.
Thank you, honorable council members and hard-working staff and everybody here. My husband and I just came from a neighborhood meeting, and I speak for everyone there when I say we are deeply concerned about the current traffic safety issues on the 1100 block of Emerson. So we are naturally alarmed at the potential for greatly increased traffic if the Churchill Crossing closes. If you add the Palo Alto Avenue Crossing, the traffic problem amplifies in Professerville and downtown neighborhoods. The Travel Demand Model Variation Report, January 20 of 2018, estimates an average weekday traffic of 9,200 vehicles per day at Churchill and 16,000 at Palo Alto. Where is that traffic going to go if these traff, if these crossings close? From what we've seen, it looks like the bulk will go through Professerville and neighborhoods downtown. A few months ago, our block discussed the near misses we've all seen at the corner of Embarcadero and Emerson, speeding cars versus pedestrians and bicyclists. I work at Palli. It's a direct route to Palli and my kids. So I contacted Mr. Mello and the council and asked for help. I was pleased to learn there was a traffic calming plan in the works already. The city recognizes we have a big safety problem already on our street. Please do not approve a plan that will make our neighborhood less safe for our kids and our pedestrians. Closing Churchill will bring increased traffic to our neighborhood and our block as cars travel from Alma to Embarcadero to Stanford and El Camino via Addison, Ramona, Emerson, and other Professerville streets. Please weigh the safety of our neighborhood streets as you consider these ideas. Emerson, Addison, Ramona are all residential streets located in a historic neighborhood. The 1100 block of Emerson specifically was not designed to be a traffic cloverleaf. I ask that council members and city staff meet with Professerville neighbors to discuss this problem. We have yet to be recognized. And you know what? We're really nice people. Come and see us, please.
Tom Kellerman, to be followed by David Shen.
Thank you. I'll be quick. I think the important thing is to carefully study the impact, not just in isolation where each individual proposal occurs, but what the effect of that is on other neighborhoods and other streets. So I think particularly if we talk about the possible closures of either Churchill or Palo Alto Avenue or both, you have to look at those several thousand cars. I think it's estimated 9,200 across Churchill and 62, 16,200 across Palo Alto Avenue. Where will they go? And if the intention is to direct that traffic to some large extent to a widened Embarcadero, how will they get there? And at the moment, the way they get there is, as Rachel was saying, driving through the city streets, the residential streets, turning them into effectively a cloverleaf. That's a lot of cars. And so I think someone has to carefully analyze where would that traffic go, as best as can be judged, and what the impact would be on the neighborhoods it's going to. So I think until that data is really available, not just the data at the specific locations, but the data of the impact, the impacted neighborhoods, you're not really in a position to make a final determination of which is the best proposal.
Thank you very much. David Shen, to be followed by Richard Perkey.
Distinguished City Council members and city staff, my name is Dave Shen, and I'm part of the North Old Palo Alto Community Group. I'd like to present to you our latest petition and signatures package, numbering 456 now, up from 300 a month ago. We are heartened by the accelerating support for our petition, which can be summarized by these guiding principles: making pedestrian cyclist safety the highest priority, reducing traffic congestion, maintaining our neighborhood's integrity, and ensuring no eminent domain of city homes. Matching up with these guiding principles, we support any lowered rail option. We do not support any raised rail option. We do not support any underpass or overpass option, including the hybrid and reverse hybrid, which still exist in the option set. If we cannot get lowered rail, then we advocate a system-wide solution to North Palo Alto looking at Churchill and Embarcadero together. We thank the City Council and staff for engaging us with the collaborative process and hope that you all have found the interactions beneficial and productive as we have. We also urge the city to march towards selecting solutions in a timely and efficient manner and working to remove the possibility of deadlock and delays. Anytime we delay, it just raises the risk that the trains will begin to increase without rail crossing solutions. If this happens, there will be a fast-growing traffic snarl in the city of immense proportions and will also adversely affect pedestrian and cyclist access and safety, who cannot cross the tracks where they formerly could. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Richard Perkey, to be followed by Cedric.
Good evening. I came this evening to lend my voice in support of the principles that have been advanced by the North Old Palo Alto Group. You just heard from Dave Shen. I won't repeat what he said. I just wanted to lend my support to that.
Thank you. Thank you. So, good evening, Council. Thanks for the opportunity to speak with you today. I am here to urge you to keep viaducts on the table as a, as an option which achieves full grade separation at an affordable price point, and to design it to address the noise and privacy concerns of the residents who live closest to the tracks. So I wanted to put the, some of the options before you in context of, these are the previous bonds that the city is currently paying for. The highest item on the chart there is $55 million, Phase 1 of the libraries and Mitchell Park Community Center. And now I'm going to zoom in the cost of the other options here. So you can see it's totally dwarfing the other options. So the red line is the $1.04 billion city limit for general obligation indebtedness. So all of the trenching and tunneling options far exceed that line. An option with viaducts at Palo Alto, Churchill, and Meadow, Meadow Charleston is below that line. The Measure B funding is about half of the height of the viaduct option. So it's the lowest of the three tall bars there. So as I see it, the benefits of, oh, I just want to also say, this is the city expenses for 2018. The little slice on the right is the debt service. And so that one is on the far right. And the, you can see that the golden slice gets larger and larger. If you have the trenching and the tunneling, the debt service becomes the major expense for the city annually for the next 30 years. The benefits that I see for the viaducts, it achieves full grade separation. It's dramatically lower cost than the cheapest of the trenching. There is zero eminent domain. And it can be designed to be quieter than the gray train, than the at-grade train, and protect residents' privacy. Lots more to say, but I'll leave it at that. Thank you very much.
Stephen Rosenbloom, to be followed by Jason Matloff.
Hi, my name's Stephen Rosenbloom. I live on Santa Rita Avenue. And I'd like to urge you to carefully take account of following three issues. First, the discussion must be, the decision must be equitable to all parts of Palo Alto. We've heard that from many people. And not disadvantage one street or neighborhood to advantage another. If vehicles are taken off one street, they must be expected to divert it to another street. Second, the solution should aim to improve east-west connectivity across Palo Alto. We should rightly refuse to have our access limited to a mere nine ways of crossing the train tracks, much less to reducing that number. My rough estimate shows that if there are 30 streets that could be allowed to cross over or under the train tracks if they were in a tunnel or an overhead viaduct. These issues are all addressed in the 2030 comprehensive plan. So the council needs to ensure that whatever final decision they make on rail is compatible with that plan. Among these are building community neighborhoods, maintaining, enhancing community character, meeting housing supply challenges, protecting and sustaining the natural environment. Please think about how a citywide tunnel or viaduct for rail could be instrumental in achieving all of these goals. Third, the council needs to ensure that proper public input into the process occurs, so that when the final decision is made, the entire city will be behind it to push forward with the legislation and taxes to realize the decision. Up to now, the process has been directed by staff with most of the effective public input taking place in small meetings, which is a far-from democratic process. And finally, I think the financing discussion has been based on lack of information. To my knowledge, the finance white paper was never discussed in the Rail Committee. It was, it was on the agenda, and it never came up. So I think anybody that says it's been fully discussed and evaluated is not telling the truth. Thank you.
Jason Matloff, to be followed by Jeff Wolfeld.
Thank you very much, members of the council. My name is Jason Matloff. I think you all know me. I want to reiterate what my colleague Dave Shen had to say. We now have over 450 signatories to our petition that we've spent many, many months putting together. I want to, I don't want to go into any of the details of it other than to express and to reiterate our adamant opposition to eminent domain and destruction of neighborhoods. And I would actually echo Councilman Sharpe's comment that it's kind of a strange oddity that the two options for hybrid underpasses are still on the docket, so to speak, for investigation, given that there's so much opposition to eminent domain. But nonetheless, it's still there. So we would, we're frustrated, and we would first ask that that be stricken. What we do propose is, like many other residents, we support lowered rail options, if that includes tunnel and trench, if they're proven to be both financially viable and viable from an engineering perspective. And we, we support the pursuit of that to the extent that it is viable. Now, having said that, if it's not viable, we have very specific waterfall of options that we have specified for the North Old Palo Alto- that we have specified for the North Old Palo Alto area that specifically, and very importantly, look at the North Old Palo Alto area as a system that includes Embarcadero. And I want to make comments specifically because there's some misinformation that's being spread around, including tonight. Specifically, Embarcadero Road is 500 yards away from Churchill. Spending a half a billion dollars to fix something that already has an investment equivalent to that amount 500 yards away is ridiculous, and we can't afford to not address this problem. And let me address specifically some of the misperceptions that are created. And I'm going to follow up with data. I'm going to send you all data on this. The 9,000 cars that are being referenced here tonight, have been referenced already four or five times, is all the traffic in all directions through Churchill Road. Only a very small percentage of that traverses across the rails, and I'll share that information with you. We have to deal with the fact that Embarcadero is the main artery road east-west through the North Old Palo Alto area, and we have to fix the known problems that everybody knows in the entire city that exist in Embarcadero Road. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Jeff Wolfeld, to be followed by Monica Tan Brown.
Good evening, council members. My name is Jeff Wolfeld. I live on Whitclam Drive in the Charleston Meadows neighborhood. My interest is in ensuring an ongoing productive dialogue between the city and its contractors and all the stakeholders in this project. Today's vote is not going to be the end of it. There will be lots of choices to make, lots of research to conduct, a lot of dead ends where fresh ideas might be needed. This project needs a formal stakeholder group, a group that's assembled by the committee every couple of weeks, perhaps, or as often as necessary, and it should include representatives from the businesses whose employees and customers need to commute through Palo Alto, and members of the community who are willing to lend their time and expertise in technical and financial areas, and those of us who live in various Palo Alto neighborhoods, who will be directly impacted by whatever decisions and whatever plan gets implemented, and probably will have to pay for a good deal of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Hello, everyone. Some of you already, oh, sorry, short persons problems. Hi, my name is Monica Tan Brown. I live on the 100 block of Churchill, and I am a member of the North Old Palo Alto Community Group. As others have mentioned, we have 456 signatures from our neighbors. This includes not only neighbors from Old Palo Alto, but also neighbors from South Gate and beyond. Using the guidelines that Dave Shen enumerated, we propose the following options. We support any lowered rail option. We do not support a raised rail option. We do not support any underpass or overpass, including a hybrid. If a lower rail cannot be done, then we advocate for closing Churchill, leaving the protected left turn lane open on the east side of Churchill, and improving Embarcadero. I agree with Neva Yarkin that neighbors should not be pitted against each other. Taking homes at Churchill is untenable. Would neighbors at Emerson prefer that we lose our homes versus a little more traffic in their neighborhood? Hey, we're nice people, too. We're ready to talk. I advocate for city council and city staff to make decisions quickly. My husband and I spent five years building our dream house for our family of two small children and a puppy. We finally completed this home last year, and a bomb about eminent domain was dropped on us in November of 2017. The continued existential threat that our home may be seized continues to give us daily undue stress. We realize this is not a decision to be entered in lightly, but we urge you to make decisions that have the lowest impact. Taking homes and creating an underpass or hybrid is not something that can be taken back. It cannot be reverted, but closing Churchill today does not mean that down the road you couldn't reopen it when the city is able to fund a tunnel or a trench. Thank you.
Thank you. Rachel Croft, to be followed by David Epstein.
Hi, I'm Rachel Croft. I live in the South Gate neighborhood on Mariposa, right along the tracks. And I wanted to come and talk about how this idea of a big vision. So I hear, I've been going to other community roundtables, the work groups. I have heard tunnel, tunnel, tunnel. The community wants a tunnel. My husband and I, when we moved into the house, we thought, how amazing would it be if you put the train in the tunnel? It could go unlimited numbers of times a day, and nobody would care, right? Nobody would even know, and it would be like a metro line that can go wherever you want. You could put bike lanes on top, so people could actually get out of their cars into a bike and have a safe place to ride. I hear that there's an issue with freight. What if you put freight on a single line instead of, does it need two lines, right? Freight doesn't go that often. So I love Lydia, that you're questioning. Can there be eminent domain? Can we look into this? Now, I realize that asking people to consider a tunnel, it just seems like such a massive project for such a tiny city, right? We have a little city along a peninsula with a string of cities, and I don't hear a lot of working between the cities. Everyone's coming up with their own options. Why are we not working together and trying to come up with some kind of regional effort with regional funding? We are a massive driver of the economy. Silicon Valley is what? The number is ranked in the world of sizes of economy. I don't know why we can't come up with regional solutions to our problem. I have lived here my entire life, and I've seen very few infrastructure projects for transportation. Highway 85, I think that's the only one. So anyway, I'm here to just advocate for the big picture, for seeing the vision of this region as a whole, and trying to improve transportation, given that we're going to continue to grow. I don't see we're going to stop growing. In the absence of doing something good and visionary that actually has, I think, ability to open east-west transportation, I support the NOPA proposal, and I am a signatory to their proposal.
Thank you. David Epstein, to be followed by Jason Stinson.
Dave Epstein, 28 years in Palo Alto, and we live on Emerson Street on the not affectionately called cloverleaf that goes from Alma around in front of our house and on to Embarcadero to get across to Palo Alto High School, and to Stanford, and to the Town and Country, and to the clinic. So just to give you an idea of how much traffic that is, in the morning, that's what wakes us up, and it stays there for quite a number of hours. I would like to ask you to not close other crossings without understanding what that does to our neighborhood, which is not set up for this kind of thing. The widening of Embarcadero will not solve any problems, because it's already impacted by those four places that I say that is bringing traffic. It's already stopped on the other side of the bridge, so it doesn't matter whether there's two lanes or one lane. It's stopped on both sides. And at Churchill, I think if you just went there at Palo Alto High School time, you'll see that you have to wait for a few traffic lights before getting past that. If you can imagine that coming around and coming back in front of our houses, it's really not an okay thing to do. So I ask you to take those two things off the table, the widening and the closing of any other, specifically Churchill, crossing. And I ask you not to separate our neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you. Jason Stinson, to be followed by Neil Shea.
Yeah, I think a lot of things that I would have, I guess the benefit of going 19th, a lot of things, eminent domain, raised rail, probably don't have to go through, not a big fan. Maybe some additional things. I live on Churchill Avenue in South Gate neighborhood, right across from Paly. Two things that I'd like to point out. One is, beyond the eminent domain, there are people like my house, which is the unfortunate circumstance of being one house on the other side of eminent domain. So we get to be, if there were to be an eminent domain and the houses on the other side of us would disappear, we would probably become a lot like 441 or 451 page mill that sat vacant for 20 years before they finally are now being developed, with lots of holes in the windows and boarded up doors. So I think the impact on an entire neighborhood is pretty massive beyond just the eminent domain. The last thing is, on Churchill, we've been at Churchill for 15 years, and we've watched what's happened to Churchill and the additional traffic that's come through there. It is, it's crazy what we have going on at Churchill in terms of our children and the pedestrians that are coming across there. If you can go, it's hard now because school's ending, but if you were to go at that crossing in the morning and watch what happens when a train comes and there's traffic, and there are students that don't pay attention to the bike lanes and to the crossings, it's crazy. I think, I know Palo Alto High School is the only high school on the peninsula that has that level of traffic on all four sides. It's like a Ring of Peril that goes around that school. There's no other high school on the peninsula that has that level of traffic. And we're already concerned on the South Gate side of Churchill about the right turn lane on to North El Camino, what that's going to do. I know that's coming. We're really concerned about that traffic increasing substantially. So anyway, I urge you guys to, I don't envy the job you have ahead of you. So, thanks.
Thank you. Neil Shea, to be followed by Martin Bernstein.
Well, I want to thank the council and the Rail Committee and staff for all the hard work on this. I think my main message is that we need to move forward. There's a lot of ways that we can try to over-engineer this, or get too fancy, or introduce risks into this process. I would caution us against anything that is going to delay or put at risk the Measure B funding, or put at risk common sense solutions. We know the trains are coming. We know that people commute by train, people can commute by bicycle. Let's find solutions that emphasize train and bicycle. Road diets have been successful on parts of Middlefield Road here recently, so I think there is no problem if we close some streets. I have lived and worked in other parts of the U.S. and abroad. I see a lot of good, functioning transit systems where the rail is raised. I see no problem with that. I live at Homer and High Street. The Homer underpass is wonderful. We use it almost every day. The rail is raised there a good six, seven feet or more. When I walk up into Menlo Park on Alma, I see that the rail is raised eight or 10 feet. No one notices. No one cares. It's all fine. I think a hybrid solution minimizing property takes is something that we should look at very carefully. Please do not use the gold-plated solutions that we've tried in the past that lead to no decision whatsoever. We don't want to tax ourselves more money. We want common sense solutions that move forward. I will just note that most of our neighboring cities have made great progress. We've been sitting on our hands here, suffering from suicides and traffic issues, while San Carlos, Belmont, San Mateo, Mountain View, others have all made decisions. So let us find the shortest distance between two paths. Let's get something done. I don't want to come here and tell you what you can't do and make your job harder. We appreciate your hard work on this very much, and I thank everyone.
Martin Bernstein, to be followed by Keith Rechtal.
Thank you, Councilmember Sharf, and council and staff. We're looking for a 130-year solution to a problem of rail crossings. And I'd say the Rail Committee is offering good counsel to keep the viaduct option as one of the things you're looking at tonight. Viaduct has no crossing safety issue, no eminent domain proceedings, in terms of any noise with viaduct, electric trains will be here in about three years, and there's no privacy issue. On Alma Street, along the rail corridor on both sides, there's about a whole four and a half miles of 40-foot-high trees. As the trains come zipping by at 60 miles, 70 miles an hour, I don't think the passengers are going to be looking in through your windows, but again, there are trees there. There's a social cost to the viaduct. It's called construction disruption. Social benefit: maintain east-west community connectivity. Economic cost of the viaduct: capital outlay, suggested fatal flaw, it could be estimated cost of construction, and constructibility of viaduct, the existing trains can be left underneath the viaduct as it's being constructed. There's a response to a suggested fatal flaw of economic benefit, of economic cost, and that is to develop a cost recovery plan. I've shared these ideas with the Rail Committee previously about looking at capturing value under or over wherever the system is done through here. So that includes leasing some retail space above or below the tracks. There's an existing air rights arrangement between the City of Palo Alto and a property developer in effect right now in Palo Alto, 432, 436 High Street, 425, and 432 Alma Street. Those are the albatary condominiums. The land is owned by the City of Palo Alto, and the air above it was built for condominiums, and then they pay rent to the city. There's economic capture. Oh, boy, I've got some other things to say. Oh, boy, I would love it. I'm sorry, it was two minutes.
Keith Rechtal, to be followed by Nadia Nyak.
My concern right now is the grade limitations due to freight. And as staff mentioned, the grade limitation has a huge impact on cost, and that's going to have a huge impact on the trade study that we're studying. So we really need an answer, and we need an answer now before we start doing the trade study, or we may not be doing the right trade study. Trains going through the Sierra go more than 2%. So I don't quite understand the limitation that we have for 1%. I don't understand the technical basis for that. So that's something that we really have to dig into. It makes a lot more sense for us to spend some money and upgrade, add more locomotives, and allow the trains to have more grade capability, than spend many, many millions more for us accommodating the trains, us accommodating the freight. It makes more sense to have the freight accommodate to our design. That's going to reduce the total cost. And the city cannot be passive about this. If we just sit and wait, you know how it works, the contracting agency will just drag their feet. We really have to push this. If we don't push this, we won't get any changes. If we don't get any changes, we're not going to get an optimal solution. We really want to minimize our overall cost, and that is by getting relaxed grade limitations. Thank you.
Thank you. Nadia Nyak, to be followed by Florence Keller.
Good evening. I'm Nadia Nyak, a resident of Old Palo Alto. I'm speaking tonight on behalf of CARD. Thank you, council members and staff, and a special thanks to all the neighbors for coming out tonight. I know not everyone agrees in the audience about what the answers are, but your interest and involvement shows that we're all trying to make a better Palo Alto, so thank you for coming. It really means a lot. When CARD was founded in response to the High-Speed Rail Project, we adopted the philosophy of not being advocates for specific alternatives, because we believe that prior to jumping into a specific selection, an efficient and inclusive process needs to be created that addresses many of the complexities of the local contexts. So I'm not going to discuss the 10 options that you're looking at. Our core tenet is that when residents and domain experts in the community become directly and meaningfully engaged with complex community issues, that better solutions are found. So we're super encouraged to hear that the staff tonight from the City Manager's Office is looking to bring ideas for a citizen team going forward. Now that we've sort of narrowed the range of alternatives, this is the right time. The new consultants are now on board, and they're going to be able to help us move forward in a collaborative, inclusive, and time-sensitive manner. But I also think that building consensus in the community lays the foundation for the community support, and frankly, for any potential additional funding that we're going to have. Even if the consultants or the staff did this by themselves and came up with the exact right solution, if we don't engage the community and bring them along in this process, we're not going to have their support, and we're probably going to need money somehow, whether it's a business license tax, a larger tax, a regional tax. You're going to need the people. So sometimes you have to go a little bit slower to go fast, and you really have to bring everyone along and hold hands. So I hope we'll do that. Thanks.
Florence Keller, to be followed by Adina Levin.
Florence Keller, thank you. I just have a couple of thoughts. First, I'd like to second Nadia's notion of getting more citizen input. I think that's really important. My question, you know, I wrote a letter to all of you, an email, and I was amazed and gratified by the rapidity of three of you responding to me almost immediately. My problem was each of you had a different answer. So let me pose it again. We're just in the process, I gather, of developing the Charleston Corridor, renovating it, and making it happier and friendlier. My question was then, and is now, will it have to be reconstructed in order to facilitate the trains? So let me tell you, the three answers I was given is that the corridor addressed a different part of Charleston. That didn't make any sense to me, because I think all of Charleston's involved in this renovation. Another answer was, Caltrain won't happen for 10 years, but I'm hearing actually, it's probably going to happen within the next five years. And lastly, the response was, hey, that's a good question. Let's ask city staff. So, city staff, why are we building something if in just a short amount of time, we're going to have to rebuild it or revisit it? So that's the first thing. My other note is, it'd be interesting to know how you're going to weigh different factors. So you've got a bunch of factors. You've got, obviously, financial concerns, community cohesiveness, safety, pedestrians, bikers, acoustical blight, visual blight, yada, yada. How are you weighing them all? I haven't heard a discussion of that, but I think without discussing that first, I don't know how you get to how we come to a solution. My thoughts, thank you for listening.
Thank you. Adina Levin, to be followed by Roberto Pion. Adina Levin to be followed by Roberto Peon. Thanks, Adina. Next.
I have delivered the public comments psychically, no need to actually talk. My name is Adina Levin with Friends of Caltrain. Glad to see that you're bringing in APEX to do the community engagement. Having worked with them in their ballot measures in Santa Clara and San Mateo Counties, they've done a good job, and I think that would be healthy here. Friends of Caltrain does not take positions on local grade separations, but has several principles, including grade separations are good to support more rail service over time, as well as crosstown connectivity. We strongly support regional partnerships to look at regional funding in the context of potentially some large-scale things that this region can, might be doing in the next several years. Support what a number of people have talked about in terms of having a fact-based and engaged conversation about costs and what the community members may wish to pay for, and how it's a really important public conversation to have. A piece of information about freight, and then switching hats to a Menlo Park resident down the street. The Port of Redwood City brings in about $7 million per year, so the idea of having freight taking 2 percent grade for cheaper options, potentially good, but taking out the Port of Redwood City in the short term seems like maybe a little bit of a problem. And then as a resident of Menlo Park, looking at the data, 16,000 car trips on Palo Alto Avenue, that's the direction that a car coming into downtown Palo Alto from Menlo Park would come. You haven't heard a lot of people speaking about that issue, however, if that is something carried forward, I strongly suspect that that is a topic where people who would, who traverse that route will be coming and speaking about the impact of closing that and directing people towards university or further. Thank you.
Thank you. Roberto Peon, be followed by Rob Lovitzky.
Hey. So my last name is pronounced Peon, which is a bit apropos here, I think. A few things. So I learned about the potential for an Embarcadero improvement, which of course, it depends on point of view, about last Friday or so. So I would definitely echo some of the concerns that Lydia brought up, thank you very much, in regards to outreach. We can use some more, and I think you'll get much better and less hysterical and less angry responses when more of the community is given more of the information. Basic, and, you know, don't just stick to the basics. Please throw more at us, throw us data. We've got a lot of people in here who know how to manage data. We will try and do the right thing with it as well. Other than that, some things about Embarcadero, since I live on it, that you should know. One of the things that you may or may not know about is there's a five-foot setback in addition to the normal setback, it's a special setback. So 10 percent of the average lot is already taken from us. And because Embarcadero's noise is so loud, it's basically to be, it's loud enough when you go out and measure it that it can hurt your ears permanently if you stick out there in the front yard. Our front yards are basically unusable today. So that setback takes away actual living space from us and the families that are already there. Please don't make it substantially worse. There are improvements that we can do that will improve the carrying capacity, that will not make it substantially noisier, like fill in the cracks in the stupid underpass that already exists. On that underpass, it seems like the choke point is really the lights behind it and not the underpass. It seems like that money would be better spent actually developing other options. And one other option I didn't see that it would be great to present is the idea of a one-lane underpass on one of the other roads. Much of the time, the traffic is going in one direction in a portion of the day, and a one-lane underpass would definitely carry a lot more than zero lanes. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Rob Lovitzky.
Yeah, just to echo what Roberto just said, is, this is a picture of the morning commute, and you can see, there's two lanes there worth of traffic, and it's still gridlocked. So doubling it doesn't really make any difference. And it's like Roberto says, it's the three lights that are following that between the crosswalk for Paly, the entrance to Paly, and El Camino Real. And as Josh knows, you can't synchronize the El Camino Real, because it's a Caltrans control. So you're stuck with these two lights, and any jogger or somebody walking to Trader Joe's can stop 50 or 100 cars anytime they want by pushing a button. And that's what happens every morning on the way to work, because Stanford has grown over the years, the industrial park, the hospital, whatever. And so that's the morning commute, it's gridlocked. And then in the afternoon, it comes back, and it's the other way. Not as bunched up because of the work hours are different. But I'm not sure where the Churchill cars are going to go. And that's what we have to figure out if you're going to close Churchill, because they're not going to just queue up in this line forever. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Well, I did want to say thank you to all of you for coming out, and I thought the public engagement was very direct and very meaningful and very helpful, frankly, in it. And I actually thought this was far more interesting and useful than when we hadn't really narrowed it down, when we hadn't gotten to the issues, when we talked about, you know, broad community engagement. It's specific community engagement that brings people out, and so I'm really glad we're starting to move in that direction. Councilmember Fine.
Thank you, Councilmember. Again, thank you, everyone, for coming out tonight. I actually do believe you're right on that, Councilmember Scharf, that when we begin to narrow the options, the feedback gets a little more useful, and I think we can look forward to a bit more clarity. So just to my colleagues, I want to make one point, which is tonight, we're more moving forward on the process than we are on judging individual options. And I think that's really, really important, because I don't want to see us get into the weeds on specific ideas or alternatives yet. Another point, I should have mentioned this first, four of us are on the Rail Committee, two of us aren't, and three of our members are recused. I think that's pretty unfortunate, and it's where these, where our state laws are essentially, I think, handicapping our decision-making overall. That's what we have to deal with. But I would ask each of us to be sure to study up on what the Rail Committee has done over the past two years, and all the engagement that Josh did outline that our citizens have given us over the past two years. I think that's really important towards this process and explaining how we got down to 10, and how we'll eventually get down to four. A few comments to the public, just kind of to think about things. We absolutely understand that eminent domain is clearly something we want to avoid as much as possible, but absolutely removing it or excluding it from any options would also take most of these alternatives off the table. And that's something I think it's incumbent on us to weigh as part of the balance when we're making these decisions, that it is absolutely something we have prioritized as something to avoid, but we do have to consider it, and it's one of the hard choices we will have to make. Another thing I noticed tonight in some of the speakers, I don't want to say there seems to be a conflict brewing, but there's a bit of back and forth, it seems, between Professoreville and north old Palo Alto, somewhat about what options should happen at Churchill, and I think that's kind of illustrative of the fact that we're not talking about specific solutions tonight, we're trying to figure out what are the correct set to move forward with. And I think a bit of that interplay between those two quote-unquote "groups" is helpful to us, and we should think, think about that a bit more. Finally, somebody else did mention the shortest decision path, and I really like that phrase. I think it speaks to the fact that we have established a process, we've established the metrics and data that we wanted to collect on it, we've had our meetings on that, and that has gotten us to these 10 items. So with that, I will move the staff recommendation.
Second, Councilmember Walbach.
Which of you second do I want?
Councilmember Walbach.
Okay, thank you. And be happy to speak about it, but some more. There's a few comments over staff I'm not going to put in the motion, but I think are really important follow-ups. So let me just go through those first. One is system circulation. Whatever we end up doing with these individual options, there's a bit of a tension between analyzing the option at its site and the system impact. So if we close Churchill, or Meadow, or Palo Alto Ave, what happens to the other existing alternatives or the future proposed ones? That's something we need to do a bit more pencil sharpening on. The freight question, whether we can buy out freight along this corridor, given the implications of Redwood City and other communities along the line, and Union Pacific, we also want to get some more definition there. And similarly, for the grade percentages, what kind of waiver do we think we can get out of Caltrain? The community engagement piece, I think most of us are probably happy that the City Manager's Office is proposing a bit more robustness there. I think we'd like to see the contours of that and what that looks like, what are the responsibilities, what are the decisions, what are the timelines? I think it's particularly helpful, as we're getting down to 10 ideas, I think a stakeholder group with 34 or 40 ideas would have been unwieldy, but we're getting to the point where it really can help focus staff and our consultants to make better decisions. Financing, as Councilmember Tanaka put, fourth, as we're getting down to five or 10 options, I think we can begin to get some ballparks, which will be helpful to Council and to the community. And then finally, as we do go forward with these ideas to alternatives, I don't think we yet know what an alternative analysis looks like. So we've mentioned in some, some of our meetings, a video flyover, or, you know, some white papers. And so it'd be nice to hear from staff, what do each of these alternative analyses look like? Are we going to have a video? Are we going to have maps? Are we going to be looking at the eminent domain impacts? All of those kind of features against a specific alternative would be really helpful. Just to speak to the motion really quickly, these are the ones that we've discussed at the Rail Committee for almost two years now. These are the ones which don't have any fatal flaws. None of them are perfect, but they do match the criteria, the priorities, and the tiers we set out at Council and at Rail Committee. So I think we're really just, at this point, removing the non-feasible solutions. And then also just a comment for the record, there were a few that we added back in, notably the viaduct, after hearing from the public that some were still interested in that, although tonight we heard many people are not interested in that. And so I think this is really the minimum viable set that we can move forward with. And I know there are people around the community who would like to see some of these removed tonight, and I understand that. I think we have to do our due diligence a little bit further on each of these. And right now, I think, my sense is, for each of these crossings, and for the city as a whole, there's something for everybody in this. And I think that's a promising place to start, and I hope that whatever stakeholder group or community engagement we do can kind of focus on that, kind of the common and best good out of this set. So with that, I would encourage everybody to support the staff motion. I'll note, it's 11:30. I really hope we can get this done by midnight. There's been a lot of work done so far, and I hope we can move forward. Thank you.
Councilmember Walbach. I also want to say thank you to everybody who spoke tonight, very good, useful input that we got from the public tonight, reflecting and echoing the input that we've gotten over the last several months and even years. I also want to thank Councilmember Fine for making the motion and for his comments. I think we might want to actually add a couple things as amendments to the motion, but I'll look to the maker and see if you're open to that. Things that staff already said they were going to do, but I think would be helpful just to have in the motion, to have clarity. And the first I'd recommend, if it's amenable to the maker, is to encourage staff to bring back to Rail Committee and/or Council plans for enhanced community engagement, you know, within the month of June.
Yes.
And then the second is, to continue exploring, or to continue exploring the future of freight and opportunities for 2 percent grade.
I think both of those are underway, but I'll accept them.
Thank you. And then, just a question for staff, actually. I wasn't really clear on what we're going to try and get done in June, because I kind of saw one thing on page three of the slides for the staff presentation, but heard a little bit of hesitation, so I just kind of wanted to revisit that question quickly. I think we do want to get, and I think it is staff's understanding, that we're going to try and get to that four to eight range by June 30th, before we go on our summer break. But I want to hear what you're thinking on that.
Right. At this point, we have a committee, Rail Committee meeting scheduled on the 20th of June. The ability to then turn that around for your 25th meeting, I think, is somewhat questionable. That's why you heard the hesitation. So we would need to look at dates available, but clearly, based on the calendar as it currently stands, we could get to the committee in June.
Okay.
And we've charged our consultant with taking an initial look at some of these ideas, and we'll have some additional information that might assist us with eliminating some of these 10.
Okay. And I think that Councilmember Scharf actually made some comments before we went to the public that were, I think, hit the nail on the head. Some of these, once we take a cursory look at them, will be easier to remove than others. Obviously, some people think we have enough information to remove them now. As Councilmember Fine just suggested, we should probably do a little more due diligence on these, because each of these does have pros and cons. You know, some of them have privacy, noise, and visual impacts, but are substantially less expensive and provide traffic mobility. Others are far more expensive, but check every other box. Some would require more eminent domain, but are, you know, good for circulation and for, and for safety. So there really are pros and cons for each of these. I think, like all of my colleagues, my preference is going to be for minimizing eminent domain as much as possible, and being financially feasible. Those are maybe the two most important things, but still in pursuit of the larger goal, which is, you know, I think the two main goals of why we're doing this is mobility and safety, right? So if we, if we just cared about no eminent domain and low cost, we could just close all of them, right? That would be the easy solution. But of course, the goal is to have mobility across, across the tracks and to improve safety. So some level of grade separation is necessary. I do encourage everybody to, to keep staying engaged in this, and I am, I'm really pleased to see that staff and my colleagues are increasingly open to working with the new consulting team to have a more, I guess the phrase that staff was using was enhanced community engagement. Whether that looks like a stakeholder advisory group, or how that operates, is still an open question. I do think that having a stakeholder advisory group in parallel to our existing technical advisory group is probably a good idea, so I would encourage looking at that and considering that very carefully. I don't think it's necessary for that to cause delay. I'm not envisioning something like when we created the CAC for the Comprehensive Plan, where we knew it would cause substantial delay, but we thought it was worth it anyway. I think what we're envisioning here is something where it provides additional input, gives a venue for people from different parts of the city and different interests to work together and work with staff and consultants to dig deep, and kind of work through some of these issues, and provide some, you know, another data point and touchstone for the Council and for the Rail Committee and for staff. So I don't think it should require any substantial delay. So with that, I do hope that my colleagues will support this, and that we can move forward. And then in June, we'll probably be making some, some further reductions to this list, limiting those that after a little bit more information, you will feel more comfortable removing.
Councilmember Holman.
Yes, thank you. So I'll add my voice to those who support the community, sorry, getting the community more involved. And one of the things that I've witnessed over time is that engineering drawings alone just don't do it for educating the public. There've got to be some real illustrations provided to show what things look like, not stick drawings of people, to use an analogy, because it doesn't help people understand the consequences, impacts, or what's being proposed, or under consideration. So is that something that staff's going to be coming forward with, with a new consultant?
So the consultant has, within their scope, the preparation of visualization materials for four to eight alternatives for study, and those would include photo simulations, plan lines, video flyovers, 3D renderings, but we need to get to that four to eight alternatives for analysis before we can start spending money, you know, on that magnitude of, of work. Those are Those are quite expensive. The flyovers themselves, I think, were $30,000 apiece, somewhere around there.
Can I suggest, though, that, thank you for that, and can I suggest, though, that to get down to the reduced number, it's helpful to have some kind of representation. It doesn't have to be the sophistication of the video flyovers, but it has to be some kind of representation that gives people an idea of what things are going to look like. And I think to try to do it with stick drawings is just not going to be satisfactory to people or informational enough for people.
I certainly feel confident, speaking for staff, that we understand what we're striving for is communication and understanding across a variety of stakeholders, and I think we can accomplish that.
Say the last part again, please. Say the last part again, please.
It's understanding and communication with a wide variety of stakeholders, and that we can accomplish that.
So you're not exactly answering the question, but I'm taking it that one of the ways of communicating and getting people to understand would be some kind of visualizations.
Yes.
So, okay. Very good. Thank you. So can staff provide an update of where we are with the hydrology study? Because that's going to have a big role in what we ultimately end up doing and how we would go about doing what we want to do.
The hydrology study was rolled into the trenching and tunneling white paper, which was revised, I think, earlier this year, after comments from the public and the Rail Committee. So the trenching and tunneling white paper is posted on the project website. We can also send you that, if you'd like.
Yes, and how much impact that has on trenching and tunneling. It doesn't seem to be a part of anybody's awareness.
There's a chapter in the trenching and tunneling white paper that addresses the groundwater and other hydrology issues.
I understand what you're saying. It doesn't seem to be a part of anybody's awareness, so I'm not sure how much is being considered in terms of looking at options.
Absolutely. I think we identified it as a key issue with respect to trenching, particularly in South Palo Alto. So as we continue the more in-depth analysis, I would expect that that will become, again, parallel to the level or the specificity of the alternatives. We'll bring the issues that are relevant, whether it be hydrology, in the case of going underground, to visual impacts, in terms of going above ground. So again, we'll match the analysis with the alternatives that we're bringing forward.
Okay, very good. Thank you for that. I still have concerns, I mean, as I've already said, it's like I really, I think it's imperative that we do the greater community engagement. That said, there's already been comments made up here about getting to a narrowed-down list of alternatives by June, and I've expressed concerns in the past about the feasibility of the timeline that's been laid out by staff. So, once again, I don't know how we're going to have greater community input and engagement and narrow down, you know, the alternatives by June. It's June, basically, now.
With the risk of being maybe a little too direct on this, that if we come back and to the Rail Committee can demonstrate that a particular alternative has what I'll term as severe property impacts, that I think we'll be confident bringing it forward and suggesting that that be removed from further consideration.
Okay. And council has said before, and I guess I just reiterate, iterate, I guess, for myself, it's like imminent domain would be an absolute last resort, and I think we're all, that's where we all are, is absolute last resort. I think there's agreement on that.
Just to reiterate, severe property impacts, meaning the likelihood of eminent domain being required.
Yeah.
So I think we're saying the same thing, just using different words.
Absolutely. There also needs to be, and I don't know if staff has this or not, some people seem to have it, is the 9,200-vehicle trips on Churchill. The delineation of that, how many of those trips, how many of those vehicle trips cross Alma Street? That number needs to be known for any consideration about potential closing of Alma, partial closing of Churchill, I'm sorry.
Certainly. These are the kind of things we'll look at when we get down to the shorter list of alternatives for evaluation. We'll have detailed traffic circulation studies for each of those alternatives.
And to be clear, I'm not advocating for anything, but that's a piece of critical information, and I think also a piece of critical information is what very specifically the consequences would be physically of any part of Embarcadero being widening if it is just under the viaduct. So that's there now, but it needs to be really clearly described and illustrated, both. And again, I'm not advocating for any of that. I'm just saying, it's information that needs to really be put out there. Funding, I'm still, and I've said this before, I think I've said it from the dais, that I'm really disappointed that we're not looking at a employee headcount tax or a business license tax or some form or other. There've been comments that, well, we'll do it in two years, but my view of that is, if we did it this year, we could be accumulating and some funds to go towards this in the meantime. So I think putting it off two years is, I think it's a grave mistake, a very grave mistake. The issues about freight, I know this has been brought up before, too, but what would it take for the city to hire a lobbyist to help get better information and quicker movement on answers about the freight questions that are outstanding?
So as I stated earlier, UP is a private corporation, so I don't know how effective lobbying would be if our goal were to buy out UP or relocate them. There's very little, from a regulatory perspective, that can be done to move and/or terminate freight on the peninsula without purchasing the vested freight rights that UP has currently. So we, you know, we will do all we can to get more information on the status of freight and the plans for freight and whatever options are available to us, but that is a pretty heavy lift to get any kind of movement on freight, in my opinion.
Okay. And I don't see, let me come back to that. I also don't see anything about partial trench, sorry, partial trenching.
Are you referring to a shallow trench or a shorter trench?
Shallow.
A shallow trench would be the rail-under-road hybrid, and those are both, I think we have both of those, we have those for both Charleston and Meadow and Churchill currently on the list of 10.
And shorter trench, the, shorter trench is not eliminated because we don't have to identify where and...
We have a shorter trench that only goes underneath Charleston and Meadow on the list of 10. There was a citywide trench that was in the list of 34 ideas that was eliminated based on the fatal flaws, but there's still a shorter trench that only goes under Charleston and Meadow.
And a couple other things here, which are, Bob Moss brought up a couple of questions, and I think they are missing in the information so far, and that is the cost of each proposal, as best that can be estimated, and also the number of homes that would be lost for any given proposal. So will that information be coming forward to the Rail Committee?
Yes, all that information will be developed as part of the alternatives analysis phase. There is quite a bit of work required to, you know, prepare those estimates and also identify impact, so we're trying to limit that work to a smaller number of alternatives.
Yeah, it's really, it's kind of chicken and egg, isn't it? Because you need to have that information also to be able to narrow it down. So I would encourage you all, the staff and the Rail Committee, to be more inclusive than exclusive in terms of considering that. Another question was brought up, and this gets brought up a lot, too, and that is, why are we not working more with other cities? Why are we not looking at this more in a regional perspective?
I think we very much are, working with both our immediate neighbors as well as cities of common interest along the Caltrain line. That said, I think each city has individual interests and also an interest in ensuring that local needs are priority.
Okay. And then just to go back to, I think that's just about it for me, except for one, I think it's one thing, I'm looking at my notes here. Going back to the lobbyist issue again, so wouldn't it be possible to lobby the state to get the state to get involved in trying to get some action? I mean, we're lobbying the state, not the rail entity.
I'll give you a professional opinion that that would not be effective. But that said, you know, it certainly is within the realm of advocacy to pursue. Again, as Josh pointed out, Union Pacific operates under federal regulations, and so the likelihood that we could effectively engage the state to then effectively influence UP, I think, is difficult to anticipate.
Well, I'll just flatter it out there and see if there's other interest in this, is to add an amendment that we would engage a lobbyist to influence state to get involved in determining freight and moving more quickly towards getting freight answers.
So I think, I think I know where you're going with this, and it's, one, we do have an existing lobbyist at the state level, and so it would be to somehow have staff work with our lobbyists to look at the, I would say it's beyond just the freight stuff, it's also the funding stuff.
Yeah. So could, does our current lobbyist have enough bandwidth to take this on to, though? Is that possible?
Well, we can certainly have that conversation with them.
Okay.
I think that's worth doing, so engage a, and we're, I don't know what language you want, but yes.
Yeah, and maybe staff, with my limited voice, maybe you could...
Could we make it a little more general and just say...
That's what I was looking to staff.
Engage a lobbyist to help facilitate the selection of our alternative and funding of construct, you know, something more general? Because there may be other things we need help with as we move along this process.
Okay. As long as you're including freight, too. Yeah.
That's good by me.
Okay.
I'm not sure that we'd want our lobbyists to help us select our alternative, but what I was going to suggest was, was engage our lobbyists to, just engage with our lobbyists on freight, funding, and other relevant matters. Keep it general that way. Would that be okay with you, Josh? Again, to get the conversation started.
I think if that's the direction the council would like to head, we would certainly follow up on it with our lobbyists. I would also suggest that our AE comp team, including Apex, would be a very helpful resource, given their experience in both working, well, working with all of the parties we're discussing.
Sounds good. Now I'm totally out of voice, so, okay. Sounds like that was accepted, so thank you.
Councilmember Koo?
So first, I just want to say thank you very much for the community, for speaking up about how important it is that you are engaged and that you are part of the decision process. I really appreciate that, and thanks to staff as well as to my council colleagues for hearing this as well and indicating so. So thanks to Councilmember Fine and Walbach for putting this motion forward. I did wanted to ask staff to, when you come back, if what Mr. Bernstein had mentioned about the Abater share of funding, or if you could kind of give us an understanding of how that works and what kind of funding we're getting and how that is. I think I'd appreciate knowing that. I think everybody would appreciate knowing that. If it means that you have to get back to Mr. Bernstein to find out more, please do so. I mean, that's one way of us understanding how this cost share or value capture can work. And Mr. Bernstein, if you can send us your comments, I'd appreciate that, too, since you didn't finish. Then I wanted to say that I would like to see if I might be able to add in item number 10 WBP, if the tunneling with freight at grade can be added there in order for it to be discussed as well. It's part of it, if you would accept that.
I would be willing to, but I think it's already in there, because the tunnel is just looking at a tunnel for, it doesn't necessarily exclude the rail on the surface.
Yeah, if you wanted to add with or without freight.
Yes.
That would work for us, because we want to look at both.
Right.
I think that's a good point to communicate to folks.
Then I would like to see if I might be able to either introduce a partial trench that you might maybe include in one of the, in one of your items there for South Palo Alto. And David, if you can pull up that picture for me, thank you. If you could fit that. It's a partial trench, and I think that in the past, you guys have discussed this at the Rail Committee prior to me being on it, but it'll be located southbound, Alma Street. So it would have the rail on the, so the top shows the current situation, where you have the rail very close to properties and Alma right there, and then there's the sidewalk, and then there's the properties. But after construction, you can see both sidewalks on both sides, so it creates a buffer between the properties, the homes. And then you would have Alma going south, Alma going north, and then the rail in the middle. So then this way, you do have buffers from both, from the properties, and it would be a trench over there. It's a partial trench. And this is the other view of this partial trench. I don't know if you can fit it or if the maker and the...
So we've thought about that, and I would recommend amending number six to just have a new clause at the end that says, with Alma Street in its existing alignment or new alignment.
Would that be acceptable to you?
I would accept that, yeah.
Thank you. Would that be?
Yeah. Just want to make sure, get a chance to weigh in. Staff is comfortable with that?
Yeah, I mean, we'd have to think about what the benefits were and whether it would improve quality of life or not, and we'll look at that, you know, as we, if we advance this alternative. There could be construction staging benefits to it as well, but that's something we'd have to look at more deeply as we move forward.
Okay. I'll accept it.
Thank you so much. Also, I understand that Atherton, when they were advocating for their wires, they're doing the T versus the H. Can we advocate for the T also?
So the center poles are reserved for areas where there's enough width between the tracks, and in Atherton, the tracks are farther apart than they are in most of Palo Alto, so in the bulk of Palo Alto, we're going to have the side-mounted poles. So in the bulk of Palo Alto, we're gonna have the side-mounted poles for the overhead category.
And this is all through the rail corridor?
Yeah. So we've already asked that question to Caltrain, and the response we got is that where they have the room between the two tracks, they're going with the center, because they don't have to worry about as many trees and things along the outside. But unfortunately, in Palo Alto, the tracks are not far enough apart to accommodate the center, the center poles.
The center one.
But, you know, we could, you know, if we were gonna rebuild segments of the railroad as part of this project, we could look at center poles as part of that, if we're doing a viaduct or something to that effect.
Consistent and.
Perhaps just to clarify also, that this is, the conversation that Josh is referring to is really in the context of the current electrification project. So it's separate and arguably sooner than anything we're talking about here. When we get into the future conditions, I think that, you know, there are a variety of options that might apply in, let's say, that scenario, that would not fit in the current right-of-way. So I don't know that we would exclude it at this point for a long-term scenario. Same time, the location of the poles relatively small impact in comparison to the other issues that we're discussing here.
Then in regards to the tunneling, right? Have you reached out to people, especially one of our local innovators who are doing the Boring and so forth, such as Elon Musk and, and him? He's the one and only that I know of that is doing that. But do you foresee yourself reaching out to him in order to see what are the benefits that he's experiencing that we might gain from that, or?
So I would just say, Councilmember Coop, I actually have reached out to the Boring company and spent quite a lot of time talking to them about this, and I believe councilmember Fine has as well. And I will just tell you that they said they are not involved in this, they will not get involved in this, and they have no interest in getting involved in this.
Yeah, and you know what? That would have been nice if we, if that was kind of something that was kind of communicated to the rest of us, instead of just one part. So then we wouldn't have to bring this back up again. And again, you know, I think that sadly, you know, this is actually horrible news for electrification, right? But this is another communication problem that I find, that there are certain members that go out and speak to people, but it's never communicated widely to everybody, including colleague council members. So it would be really nice, moving forward, that we do hear this early on, and also for the general public to know about. You know, just to go back to those poles, the T one, how does the H affect, how the H-style poles affect trees? Is that gonna mean that we're gonna be cutting down some trees, or, I mean, how would that?
Well, I think, thank you for the question. It is an issue that we'll need to look more closely at once Caltrain gets into the more detailed design for the phase, I think we're considered Phase Three of the electrification project. They're currently, I believe, working on Phase Two, so it wouldn't be too far out in the future. But at this point, they have identified that there are clearance requirements for the poles that are located on the outside of the, of the tracks as opposed to between the tracks. So that is definitely an issue we're gonna need to look closely at.
So, so it will be reevaluated? It's not something that's off the table for the T or the H kind of? Or are you saying that it's just the H that is gonna continue?
In, in general, it will be the H. Again, the, the way that these poles actually work, again, poles outside the tracks as opposed to in-between the tracks, it's not, may or may not be actually an H. So that said, the, the existing rail alignment, as Josh described, is throughout virtually all of Palo Alto. The spacing between the tracks is too narrow to do the center pole. So that said, there are a couple of variations that Caltrain has suggested they might consider for individual locations. So we really need to let them get into the detailed design before we can have a more substantive conversation with them about where it might make sense.
Okay, well, I look forward to that conversation, because it would be a travesty to have any of our trees have to be cut down to accommodate this, as would be eminent domain, right? But, so thank you very much for accepting the amendments.
Yeah, first of all, I wanted to thank all the community members for coming out. I know it's like 12 o'clock right now, and you guys have been through a lot, so thank you. Thank you, staff, and my colleagues here as well. So I think the community has spoken, right? I don't think anyone here has advocated to do eminent domain. In fact, maybe my colleagues here have advocated that we, that we try to minimize or not do it at all. But the only issue I have with this motion is that it doesn't say that anywhere here. So I'd like to make a friendly amendment that, so the kind of eminent domain I'm talking about is not, you know, underground eminent domain for a trench or something where you can't see or doesn't affect anyone's property. But it's eminent domain that takes people's houses. You know, I moved to Palo Alto, I have a family, I can imagine just how devastating it would be to get a notice that your house would be eminent domain. I just think it's intolerable for us to, to put that on the table. So I'd like to make amendment to this motion that we take permanent, it's not a temporary construction eminent domain, but a permanent eminent domain that takes people's houses off the table.
So thank you for the suggestion. Two quick responses. One, on September 6, we all did vote on, discuss, and endorse the process criteria we're gonna use, including one where we want to minimize right-of-way acquisition by eminent domain. So we've already acknowledged that. And then two, my question is actually for staff. Which of these options survives if we eliminate eminent domain?
If we were eliminated entirely, I'm not sure any of them would survive.
So. Well, I'd just like, you know, a point of clarification here. Eminent domain is, is required when a property owner declines to sell the property to the city. There are willing, you know, there are projects where there are willing sellers. Sunnyvale, in particular, has actually taken, you know, a strategy where they're going to strategically acquire properties from willing sellers to try to advance their great separations. So if we were gonna put something in here like this, I'd want it to be clear that it's, you know, what it's specifically referring to, because there could be mutual agreements between the city and property owners to transfer property.
I think the community has talked about this. I think my colleagues have also acknowledged that eminent domain is not a good thing. And so I think, I think this is something that we want to take as one of the highest priorities, and not the highest priority in considering these different options. And I, you know, closing the streets is one thing, tunnels another thing. I don't think either one of those require eminent domain. So I don't think it eliminates all the options, it eliminates a few of them. I think a few of the community members have already talked about how, like, from some of these hybrid options, still takes eminent domain, and so that's, that's, and so I just think, for us, you know, we are the fortunate six people that don't live near Caltrain, so we're not gonna be, you don't have to worry about that. But we have to put ourselves in the shoes of our fellow community members who do unfortunately live near there, who might get their house taken. I think we need to not just give it lip service, but actually make it part of this motion. So I think, so I'd like to make amendment that we have permanent eminent domain. This means, like, they're taking someone's house. If they're willing to sell a house, that's fine, right? But if, if they're not, I think that's something that we should take off the table.
So I'm not willing to accept this for the reason that staff just said, that none of these options work without that. So saying, taking eminent domain off the table like this is like saying, let's do these projects, but let's not use concrete. It doesn't actually work.
I don't think so. I think it's not that. So do I have a second?
I second.
Okay. I'd say let's put it to the vote right now.
Okay. Shall we just vote? All right. The vote is to do away with eminent domain. Oh, you want to speak?
Clarification, because it says, take permanent eminent domain. Well, eminent domain is permanent, so I don't think that's exactly what you meant. I think you meant permanently take eminent domain off.
Well, I mean, the idea of, well, there might be temporary construction eminent domain needed, or eminent domain that goes into someone's property to, for a shoring period that we could see or nobody's affected by. That's not the kind of eminent domain I'm talking about. Maybe staff can help me suggest language that's more appropriate. But what we're talking about is for a family to move into Palo Alto, build a new house and get, like, evicted, makes no sense. So that's what, that's what I'm talking about.
So full, permanent property takings might be a better way to say this, but Molly might have.
Okay. Can we modify?
Because you're, you're referring to the full, you know, taking a small sliver of land may be necessary.
Yeah.
But you're referring to more taking the entire property, correct?
Exactly.
Okay.
Well, again, I hate to be picky on this, but I think it is important for the council to understand that a property owner, a single property owner, could argue that the taking of their access to Alma Street, as an example, is unacceptable, and.
Well, it leaves them landlocked, so I agree with that.
Well, potentially, or if they have access to another street, that, again, that single property owner, if all other property owners were willing to sell, but one holds out, then by taking it off the table as described, I think we would put the project in the hands of a single property owner.
Well, or there's other alternatives that we can look at. But I understand what you're saying.
So I guess, I'm sympathetic, I'm sympathetic, support the intention. But I think that there are complications to it and factors to it that it's a little premature to try to make this kind of sweeping statement at this point in time.
Councilmember Walbach, you want to make a short statement, too?
Yeah, I think that would have, this, I think we've all been very clear, in committee and here tonight, that we want to limit eminent domain takings as much as possible. This amendment might have the effect of cutting the list that we're trying to move forward here in half. We're not ready to do that. We've talked all night about how we need to do a little bit more due diligence, but we are planning on reducing this list over the next month. I think that we'll have more information within the next month about how severe the eminent domain takings, or the property takings and impacts would be of some of these. So I don't, I just, I think that this amendment is premature tonight, but the intent is clearly understood and the motivation is shared by everyone in this room. So I'm gonna vote no on the amendment, because I don't think it's necessary right now.
All right, if we could vote on the amendment? And that fails on a four to two vote.
Okay. So the other one I have is around Embarcadero. So I agree with the community members about pushing the problem from one area to another. I don't believe that we should do that. So I, I think that the Embarcadero widening should be taken off the table. So that's my other amendment.
Is it on the table specifically here, or it's in the CX ones?
So our intent with the CAX was to write it as broadly as possible. So we put all the possible improvements that may be necessary if we closed Churchill. But this would be an iterative process where we would do, run an analysis, look at what the traffic impacts are of closing Churchill, and then we would identify what mitigation measures would be needed. It may or may not be widening the underpass of Embarcadero or adding signals or.
All right. So considering we have zero data on that, on the effects of widening or not widening Embarcadero, if we happen to close Churchill, I'm not willing to accept this at the moment. I would like to see some more study on that.
Okay. Do you have a second? Okay, I'll move on then. So, you know, one of the community members talked about this, and I think Cedric also did a kind of a cool analysis of how much this would cost over 30 years. But I think we should have a bigger vision in this. I mean, this is not gonna be a 30-year project. This is gonna be like a 130-year project. This is gonna, this is like a multi-generational type of project. And so I think we should have the vision to think about, what is the right thing for Palo Alto? What do we really want to do? And so, and so I think that in that context, one thing we should think about is not just the usual kind of typical funding sources. So just before this, we, we authorized a sale of about 11,000 to 12,000 square feet of TDRs, which, which hopefully will raise about $3.5 million to go to the J M Z and Avenidas. But I think that's something also staff should consider, right? I mean, I think Martin or someone was talking about how we could do value capture. In many other cities, many other countries, value capture is how they fund the undergrounding of subways, of trains, of all, a whole bunch of different types. Even here in San Francisco, the Fourth and, the extension of Fourth and King to downtown is being funded through value capture. And so I think, you know, if the train is undergrounded, it frees up about 65 acres of land. You know, TDRs could directly be sold, so I think this should be as part of the funding plan. So I guess I'd like to get staff's feedback before I make a motion, whether we have to explicitly put this in there, or is this, will this be part of the study as well? Can staff answer that question?
So the financing white paper included an initial look at development, value capture, if we were to do a tunnel. But, you know, if we advanced the tunnel, the citywide tunnel, or other ideas that included the ability to do value capture, we would look at that as part of the, the funding package for the project.
Okay, great. Because I think that, you know, I think in general, a law of, law of residence opposed development, and I think depose development, it does nothing for it. But if you suddenly underground the train, it creates, you know, massive new parklands that we haven't gotten or can't really get. You know, we put the train underground that perhaps reduces suicides, pollution noise, then there's something in it for, for people to consider. So I'm glad to hear that's part of, part of the study.
I will say, though, that the numbers in the financing white paper, you know, they were, they were based on quite a bit of development, and they still didn't, they still didn't generate a really significant amount of revenue when we were looking at billion-dollar expenditures.
I totally get that. I think, in the end, like, a decision this big should must be for the voters to decide at some sort of ballot measure, because, you know, it's hard for councils to authorize 12,000 square feet, right? Or 11,000 square feet for $3.5 million. And to authorize enough to make a difference can be huge. And so that's probably a community vote, not necessarily a council vote. But I think giving this choice to the community is important, because it's a multi-generational decision, not just a decision for the next 10 years, right, or five years, or 30 years. And to do this right, I think everyone, if we, if money was no problem, this would be the option, right? Hopefully, through lobbying, through other mechanisms, we could also, you know, figure our way. But I think for us to really explore this, I think would be, would be important. So the last top.
If I could make one just clarifying point, and this may be obvious, but perhaps we're stating nonetheless, that the right-of-way that we're referring to at the surface is owned by Caltrain. And so any potential for value capture would need to be negotiated with them, understanding their ownership interest. And as Josh pointed out, I think that the work we've done to date suggests that penciling this out would be a real challenge. So in any case, just wanted to.
I understand that. And in San Francisco, same situation, the tunnel that went from Fourth and King to downtown, none of that land is owned by the city, and it was, all had to be negotiated. So I totally understand the complexities and difficulties involved in that. It's just that I think giving the community an option is important. Whether this is the right option or the option that the community accepts, I don't know. But I think giving the option is important. So last question I have, and it's actually for, for Councilman Walbach, which is about the community panel stakeholders. So I actually like the idea, but it's not actually quite in here. So I guess, I mean, I wanted to understand, like, it seems like the other.
Item 11.
Okay, so this is gonna be, do you think that's explicit enough about a stakeholder group? Do you think that's?
No, I think it's general enough to allow staff to take the time to work with consultant to put together a proposal and bring it back to us, and then we can review it, modify, change it, approve it or deny it.
Doesn't say that, but okay.
Right. This allows them to do the staff work with the consultant, and then we can review their work and suggestion engine.
Okay. That's fine.
I think that brings you back to me. I just really wanted to say one thing or two things. I think, first of all, when, when Councilmember Fine started, he said that all of these options here, all of these options here are, have no fatal flaws. I just wanted to remind people that the citywide tunnel has a fatal flaw. We put it in because we wanted to have the discussion. And I think what you really, we really need to think about is what information we're gonna need further on that, and staff. And it's really a separate issue than coming back with these. I also wanted to say that I really do think the Palo Alto Avenue. the Palo Alto Avenue grade crossing is one of those grade crossings where the community, no one's living right next to it, frankly. So, I think people would rather not see it closed, if that's a possibility. I think it's a technical issue about what the hybrid or what the viaduct works, and whether or not it works with Menlo Park and that. So, I think that's something we could make really good progress on with a lot less concerns from the community. With Churchill, I think the sooner you tell us, if, if the people that spoke that said either the Churchill, either the Churchill hybrids would take 36 homes, I would basically suggest that everyone right here at this table would probably vote those two down right now. So, I think if you clarify that, the sooner the better. That gets rid of those two. And then, I, I think while the Meadow and Charleston trencher tunnel, we don't know if it has a fatal flaw. It was a little unclear, you know, if, the fatal flaw could be that if you don't get a 2% grade separation, how much it really, a 2% grade, how much it really costs. So, I want to caution everyone about, we have the pony issue with the citywide tunnel, which is, we've talked about it for so long that people think it's a reality, everyone wants a pony, but it's never going to happen. And given that it's never going to happen, I don't want that to happen, which what I view is the most difficult discussion here, is the Charleston and Meadow one. And I think we really have to focus on understanding the Meadow and Charleston trencher tunnel, and does it have a fatal flaw? And frankly, if it is a trench, some of those pictures of the flyovers, you know, I would say it may be worth spending the $30,000 tomorrow, frankly. No, I mean, really, I'm serious. Would be worth spending the $30,000, because Councilmember Holman is right, a visual speaks louder than anything else. And I don't think people are actually going to want that trench when they take a look at it and see what it looks like. But I could be wrong, but I think we need to, we need to do that as soon as possible. So, I did, again, want to thank you for all your hard work, and thank my colleagues for all their stuff, and for the community for coming out. I thought the input was great. And if we could vote on the board? And that passes unanimously.